At this time, I'd like to call our April 8th Board of Supervisors meeting to order. If I could please ask Mr. Who did the invocation last month? You did. Oh, okay. Mr. Thomas, would you like to do invocation? All righty. Please stand for invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. To the God of our weary years and the God of our silent tears, it is to you we pray. First of all, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to represent Caroline County, and we ask your wisdom and guidance so that we may do all the right things for the county. We ask you to be with us as we approach this season of resurrection. Let us all remember that for only through you are we saved. In the name of Jesus the Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to all nations under our indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Sure.
All right. Our first thing on our agenda is opening board comments. Mr. Black will start at your end of the table tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Lee. Just a few things. I kind of want to get some things that I've seen off my, on social media off my mind a little bit or kind of talk about them. We have been dealing as a board, we're dealing with obviously issues with schools and overcrowding. And I have always been a supervisor that has been pushing for the schools. And I've seen some social media posts that while I 100% agree the schools need more space and we need to work with them on that, there are some posts that I think are a little bit misleading and kind of half-truths. And one of the ones I saw, they've had a number of them, but one of the ones I saw is a number of lots that can be built in Caroline. While there technically is thousands and thousands of lots that can be built in Caroline, and we are experiencing explosive growth, that is not arguing. However, there are a couple neighborhoods, Carmel Church Station, as well as Haymont, that have been on the books for over a decade and nothing has happened. So to put out there, it's kind of like to me a little bit fear mongering. I think we're trying to work with the schools. And then the second thing is in talking with a few teachers within the school system, many of, it appears at the elementary school, there have been some younger kids, Head Start and even younger possibly, that have been pushed into the elementary schools over the last couple of years that were in a different building. And while I am agreement, I will fight that we need another elementary school, in the time that schools did put out there that we, building a new elementary school is not going to happen overnight, even if we all agreed to it today where it needed to go, it's going to be five years. So in that five-year timeframe, you know, there is going to be, we need to look at space. So that's, that's one thing I needed to get off my chest. And then the second thing is dealing with the retail. We hired a consultant and that gave us an excellent presentation about retail in Caroline County and recruiting retail. And Mr. Wilson did a great job in recruiting them, and I think they did an excellent job. A lot of people have been on the board or putting pressure on the board because we have had a lot of data centers come to us. There's no question, there have been a lot of data centers that have come to us. But the criticism that the board has gotten is we don't recruit retail. Well, as we saw by the presentation, we are trying to recruit retail. We are working with Mr. Wilson, and in many cases, the numbers aren't there yet. I don't believe, and I hope that was unanimous with the board, I don't believe anyone up here on the Board of Supervisors thought that by hiring that consultant, that it was a waste of, waste of money. We know that there are certain things that are needed. And then finally, and I will finish up, on April 26th, we do have in the county, we do have a team up to clean up that day, a trash pickup. So I encourage everyone, I know Wright Chapel is involved, I know the Catholic Church is involved, St. Mary's. I think the Democratic Party has got, you know, a team that's going there. Several organizations have teams, so it would be nice for other organizations to be involved in it. And that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've just got a few quick ones. One is for, for staff, well, two are for staff, and I think I've discussed this. Mr. Hughes is not here today. Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see over there. I've discussed this with Mr. Hughes before, and I'd like to formally ask him to move it towards a planning commission, but I've got a few citizens who are going to be renting part of their houses. I think the economy has become such that that's going to be much more common. But we have an ordinance that prohibits a second stove in a residence, and I think if we could get a ordinance that would allow that under certain conditions, it would work. Also, in that same vein, we have people who are using their secondary buildings as a home business, and I think we need to look at those a little more closer because I imagine quite a few people will be, be using their home as a home business. And the other one is, well, it's kind of related. Mr. Black mentioned explosive growth, and our explosive growth is 700 people a year. It was presented in terms of the, or presented in terms of a percentage, and a percentage for us of 700 is a lot of people. So we do have to prepare for a new school, and I'm one of the ones who said we should build a new school. So we're going to work on that. Part of that process, though, we do have Mr. Cully, some answers we're supposed to get back from the school system regarding the questions, and you could tell us later in the, in the final update where we are in responses to those questions, such as where the kids are now and maintenance numbers and things of that nature. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Forehand.
Just to address one little thing Mr. Thomas said, as someone who lives in a neighborhood where most of the houses have basements, I would exercise, I would hope that we exercise caution regarding making a single-family home into a duplex. It's because the parking situation in a lot of these places was not meant for two families living in them, and the amenities for these aren't made for two families. And that's specific to these neighborhoods that we're, that I live in personally, but anyway, that's just a caution because that is already an issue that we're dealing with to some degree.
And if I could add there without, yes, sir. I mean, without cutting you off, these are single-family houses that I'd be looking at. So with plenty of lot space.
Sure. The circumstances in you.
Right.
That's just one thing, another aspect of that, of that issue. The other thing has slipped my mind, so I'll just defer to my associates. Thank you.
Mr. Sealy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me start with the Bowling Green Farmers Market is open, and this is coming up on the second Saturday, and they have a different set of vendors on the second Saturday of every month, so that's happening this weekend. Dati Chic Roadside Stand will open on Chase Street this Saturday for the first time this season with a garden shop and a spring market and a plant swap. Town of Bowling Green will do its famous clean sweep on May 17th. And for everybody in, in the, in the county, but particularly in Sparta, on May 10th, we will do the grand opening of the Sparta Fire Station at 11 o'clock. The long-awaited station is, is now ready to be occupied. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. And Mr. Underwood.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have comments. Over the last couple of weeks, I know that there have been some meetings with different communities about our needs for schools and overcrowding and the situation that, that we have before us. I worked in public school for 30 years, both private and public. I coached at Caroline High School. I was a teacher, substitute teacher, principal. During those years, I spent tens of thousands of dollars out of my own pocket to ensure that when Caroline County students arrived at different venues, that we looked a part of, of winters. I thanked the board then, back then for supporting us, but I paid that out of my pocket, probably five to $7,000 a year. We rode a charter bus to games across the state to ensure that we were not the stepchildren that people thought Caroline County was. I say that to say, there's a rumor going around that Mr. Underwood is anti-schooled. I'm not anti-schooled, but I have a responsibility to the taxpayer to ensure that every dollar, every penny that you give us, we use it for the betterment of Caroline County. Are the elementary schools overcrowded? Yes. But the answer is why? The tax dollars that you give us are to support K-12. Look at the governor's budget, he talks about K-12. There are specific grants for pre-K and Head Start. Monies for K-12 should not be braided into pre-K money. It should be a standalone program, and it should fund itself. That money comes from the state, the federal government, and we supply about $85,000 in county match. But let me go a little further. We have a perfect building in Bowling Green Elementary, sitting here up the street, two miles. What are we using it for? It's an administrative building. This board spent thousands of dollars to upgrade that building, only to have that building closed and turned into a central office. Central office needs to move elsewhere. Matter of fact, they could move back across the street to the old Bowling Green High School because part of that building is empty. Oh, and we're still using it for Governor's School. So if it's good enough for our kids, it ought to be good enough for adults. I'm not anti-schooled, but I'm going to ensure that every dollar that we spend for taxpayers, is spent to the best it can be. Yes, we're going to need a new school, as my colleagues have said. Why? 23,500 kids are north of us in Spotsylvania. 23,400 directly south of us, Hanover County, 17,000 students. Accreditation-wise, 25 of Spotsylvania's 29 schools are accredited, and Hanover, 26, 25 of 26 schools are accredited. In Caroline County, three of five schools are accredited with a population of 4,500. King George has a population of 4,500. Five schools, all five accredited. Let's talk about dollars and cents. Where does that money come from that we need for schools? The median income in Spotsylvania County is $117,000 per household. The median income in Hanover County is 109,000 per household. The median income in King George is 110,000 per household. The median income in Caroline County is $80,000. A big difference in terms of tax dollars. That's why we need to make sure that we continue to support business and grow business in Caroline County. The taxpayers cannot afford the amount of money that's needed to do what we need to do in the county. I agree, we need, we're going to need to grow. No question. But I'm not anti-schooled. I have concerns. Anytime there's $33 million of deferred maintenance, that's your responsibility. I have concern. Don't put it on my back. It's not my issue, only because it's dollars and cents. It's their issue. You've got a police department here, a sheriff's office, that is growing. I don't know if you listen to the scanner on the weekends, on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays, but the sheriff never gets a rest. We're going to need a public safety building for forensic and all of the new technology that goes along with policing. Probably another $10 million on top of a new school. Fire and rescue. We're going to need three fire stations. Right now, they're about $7 million, $6 million of firehouse. We're going to need one in Port Royal. We're going to need one in Bowling Green. And we're going to need one in Ladysmith. Ladysmith is growing like a weed. But I don't understand why we can't fix this issue. 10 years ago, we had 500 employees in the school system. We now have 800 with 150, 170 more kids. For every one employee, we have five kids. It's too much. It's top-heavy, it's too much. It's time for the foolishness to stop and get down to brass tacks. I've listened. I've listened, and I'll take the heat for this board because I've sat in their seat, and I know it's tough. And I'm not saying that it's not tough. But we all have to make tough decisions. If the political climate continues in the state of, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and we go to a voucher system, we're going to have a greater problem. Because kids are going to go where their parents want them to go. But it's coming. The temperature is changing. We have to do better, sometimes with less. I heard someone say, well, take the money away from parks and rec. This board instituted, instituted a cigarette tax so that the citizens would not have to pay for park and rec. That cigarette tax brings in $800,000 a year. That's where a lot of the amenities and growth is coming from within the county. The citizens who pay taxes have a right to have facilities that they can be proud of as well. And I can't forget Bowling Green, whose water already is contaminated. They have nowhere to go for water. That's going to be a 10 or $15 million project. Where does the money come from? Someone told me that, a person told them, they don't care about where the money comes from, they just want it done. It doesn't work that way. You, the taxpayers, deserve better. And I'm going to continue to fight until I believe it's right. You can call me what you want. You can call me anti-school, you can call me anti-anything, but I'm not going to lie to you, I'm not going to tell you falsehoods. It's time for work. It's time to come together and make sure that within our five-year plan, we take care of our elementary students. Within our 10-year plan, we make sure that we don't overburden our citizens because we have growth within our community, business growth. Because business is where the money can come that does not impact you. I read an article the other day that Loudoun County's budget was $945,000 before, $945 million before the first data center came to Loudoun County. Now the data centers add $940 million to their budget, almost double. All of it is not good. And I'm not going to sit here and lie to you and say that it all is good, but some growth is good, and it's our responsibility to make sure that we grow responsibly. And Madam Chairman, with that, I thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. That moves us on to amendments to the agendas. Are there any amendments?
I make a motion to adopt the budget as presented, I mean, the budget, the agenda as presented. I'm looking at my agenda and...
I have a motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Madam Chair, if I could add an agenda item, I'd like to go into closed session to talk about personnel. If Mr. ...
I will amend my motion to add...
Do we need...
Close meeting personnel.
Language for that meet for.
Do we just say...
I didn't see personnel on the closed session.
It's not listed now, but I can add, I can add.
If you could do that for me, I'd certainly appreciate it. Madam Chair, I'd ask that the board allow us to go into discuss personnel.
All right, we have an amendment to the agenda. We have a second.
I'll make a motion to, to amend the agenda to add personnel for closed meeting.
Do I have a second? Second, Mr. Thomas, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Presentations and reports. VDOT, let's get you up here so you can get out to those two little girls.
Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, county staff, thanks for having me here this evening. I'm going to quickly go through the VDOT project update, and then I'll, I'll take some time to have, have a chat with you all about anything else you want to go into. In a second, I will do that. Good? All right. You can see that, all right? All right, well, I'll, I'll speak it for you. So here, the first project we've got is Route 601, Panola Road. So actually, this is not a VDOT project, this is a CSX project, but I keep this slide on here, just obviously, there's going to be impacts to the area, people are going to have some questions. So CSX, usually in federal rail funds, are upgrading this crossing on Panola to a quad gate with some additional lights. That, that construction is underway and is expected to be completed this summer, and from my understanding, they don't have plans to close the road through much of that. Here we have Route 638 Bridge over South River. This is a full replacement utilizing federal funds through the State of Good Repair Program. This project is being completed and was awarded to Bryant Structures. We are using Ladysmith Road and Page Road as a detour through fall of 2025, and it is on pace to be completed in the fall. Here we have a picture of an almost-completed turn lane. This is Route 301 onto Route 608, right there in front of the Carolina Barbecue on 301. Here we have, this was just to add a about 200, 250-foot right turn lane going to the convenience site. That work has been completed. The only thing left to do is to stripe it as a turn lane, which will be completed this month. Here, we have a turn lane that we're looking to add, turning from 676 on to 207. This is another brief turn lane, we're planning to utilize secondary six-year plan funds. Tonight, you all, later in the agenda, you're going to be approving the advertisement for the public hearing, meaning that within the next month, you will have the actual secondary six-year plan public hearing. This is one of the projects that the Transportation Committee here in Caroline is recommending for secondary six-year plan funds, and there's the opportunity to move some telepathy funds up to complete this, potentially this summer, as soon as that money is available. So, yes, sir.
That's double three-jump road making the right turn onto 207 right at the high school.
Yes, sir.
How much holding? How many cars?
I don't have the distance of the turn lane off the top of my head. We did actually cut it down a little bit to keep the scope within the amount of money that we have this fiscal year, because if we had done the original scope, it wouldn't be completed until 2027 or '28. So we can get some done now, which we feel is going to be, anything's going to be added help, but I'll, I'll go ahead and find that, I can get that information to you.
Land acquisition is an issue, is it?
I'm sorry?
Land acquisition is an issue.
No, no, we have, we have a right of way for it, which is, otherwise, we wouldn't, we'd have a whole very different conversation, so.
Well, it'd be an easy...
That's right. That's right.
It's county land.
But I will, I will look into the distance, and I will get that back to you, Mr. Forehand. All right, moving on. This is Route 301 and Chase Street in the town of Bowling Green. This is a smart scale project from a couple rounds ago to reconstruct US 301 and 619 to a continuous T, restricting some different movements, allowing us to close a crossover. Much of the improvements on 301 are related to safety, but the picture on the left that you see, a lot of really nice improvements for the town of Bowling Green with some additional sidewalks, some additional striping, lighting, an upgraded signal where you have the spanwire signal now. There are some right-of-way challenges. We are currently going through design. RDA is the consultant designer on that project, is about $14.1 million cost estimate to do the entirety of the work. About half of that is within the town improvements, and about the other half is related to the safety improvements on 301. So, but we are under design on that one. Moving on, this is Route 207 Northbound Bridge. This is kind of the sister project to the Southbound Bridge replacement. This is a superstructure replacement and a substructure rehab, so anything, basically anything that goes like this, parallel to the roadway, is going to be replaced, and anything standing up, we are going to rehab and make sure that it is under good condition. This is funded through State of Good Repair. Notice of award has been posted. This is a design build, so I don't, and it was in a bundle with multiple projects, so I don't have an exact schedule for you yet, but the contract completion for the entire bundle of three different projects is scheduled for the summer of 2028. So as soon as we nail down a schedule, I'll have a little bit more information on that. That's kind of been the same information I've said on this slide for about the last year, and I'll continue to say it till I have more information. Here we have, again, this is not a VDOT project, this is actually something you all are undertaking through an economic development project, but looking at two sections of road off of 207, one being Drybridge and the other being Ruth or Glen Road. Project purpose is to secure design services, provide recommendation for the improvements on Drybridge and Ruth or Glen Road. Now, again, you all, you all went through our local assistance division and central office. Gary ended up applying for a grant, ended up getting awarded some funding from the state to assist in these design efforts. There is no funding for any construction of any of this right now, but if you go through design and you have a plan in place, you're, you're one step closer to getting there. So here we have, this is, these next two slides, I just, I know you all have probably had some conversations already, but this is the first time I have had the privilege to stand in front of you and say congratulations. So this, this is the first of two recommended projects through the latest round of Smart Scale. And this first one here at Page, Marie and Route 1 was the highest rated project in the state of Virginia. So absolutely fantastic. This was rated mostly... So absolutely fantastic. This was rated mostly for safety reasons. It is going to the CTB in May. We have the the CTB hearing, I'm sorry, in, on May 6th at the VDOT office, about 86 Deacon Road. CTB meeting is in June, on June 18th to officially award funding to project. So at this time, this is one of two projects at Page, Marie, that is recommended for funding through the six-year plan and an awarded Smart Scale project. Now, this project is to provide left turn lanes looking in both directions, both onto Page and Marie. Here is the other of the two. This is turn lanes at Lake Caroline. So this is recommended for $7 million state funding. This one is for a project to construct a northbound left turn lane on Route One at Lake Caroline. Intersection, construct a southbound right, right turn lane on Route One at Lake Caroline intersection, provide lane markings on Caroline, Lake Caroline Drive for the eastbound approach. And we may also look through this project is an offset right turn lane into Lake Caroline to help with some of the site distance, looking left if you're pulling out of the private entrance. So again, these are both going to be discussed on the May 6th meeting. I would highly encourage anybody to come up to that and speak in favor of the project. And ultimately, this goes to the Commonwealth Transportation Board in June to, to be voted on. On May 6th, that's going to be up at 86 Deacon Road at my office.
Can you send us a reminder too?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and send that through Leon. And, you know, I have to say for these two slides, you know, this started, if you all recall, is me and Michelle Shropshire came and we had a whole conversation about Smart Scale and, and, you know, Leon set this up relating to how we can get projects and how it has to start with a study, right? And next thing we did was we did a study on Route One through the corridor, looking at some safety improvements, and that generated multiple Smart Scale applications. And then here you are with two awarded projects that will help safety immensely through the Route One corridor. So kudos to you all, frankly. I think this is, this is fantastic. So.
Mr. Hughes. Thank you for your drive on this. Well, there's three projects on this board tonight that have been instrumental, that you've been a big part of. So, thank you.
Here, here. All right. So here we have just some routine maintenance. This one probably shouldn't say routine, should more say emergency maintenance, but we had two recent emergency closures of some roads. We had, as you all know, these corrugated metal pipes that are out on our very, various secondary roadways throughout the county. We had Guinea Station Road on March 17th. We quickly repaired that and got it back open on the 18th with the replaced pipe and, or I'm sorry, yeah, yes, with the replaced pipe. And on Panola Road on March 23rd, we had two failed metal pipe, pipes. We were able to replace and get that open on the 24th and at least repair what was there. So both of those are done. I would just encourage you as a quick side note to this, if you all are driving and you see issues, it could be a pothole, sometimes there's a little bit more to it. So don't hesitate to, whether it's giving me a call direct or going through the 1-800-4-Road or going through the county staff, please let us know. This started as just one call and then we get out there and we were ultimately having to emergency close the road. So due to a failed pipe. So please, again, if you see these things, see something, say something. Mowing, we're getting ready to start on our mowing cycles. This is just a quick reminder. They have started picking up some of the litter out on 95. But we are going to be starting on our primary and secondary routes and the, with the goal of getting finished before the July 4th holiday. So we typically do two cycles on our primaries and two cycles on our secondaries. We do have some plant growth regulator that we do apply on some of our primary routes as well. Here we have some other routine maintenance. You will see us out and about. We have patched 455 potholes since January 1. We are out doing some deep patching, as you can see in this picture with some, with the paver. We have leased this paver and we are out in Caroline County right now doing some, some deep patches ahead of the surface treatment schedule, the resurfacing schedule. So you will see us out and about right now. The maintenance work is, again, the, the goal is to do that and do some shoulder work ahead of our resurfacing schedule, which brings us to this next slide. This is the upcoming resurfacing schedule. Just some routes to name, some sections of Route One between 207 and Goinsville, both directions, sections of Route Two, we have sections of Route 17, 301, and then some various secondary roads throughout the county. Edgar Road, Kids Fork Telegraph Road, Oxford Road, Sorrel, various secondary. So you have that in your packet. I will tell you right now, we are, we have submitted the 2026 resurfacing routes. If you all have any questions about ratings, just send them to me directly and I'll have my staff take a look at ratings and we'll see kind of where they stand in the echelon of our resurfacing schedule. Here is the end of the presentation. So at this point, if you all have any questions for me or anything I can, I can look into, let me know.
Anyone have any question? Mr. Thomas? Oh, all right. Let me start, let me, who's going first? Who said something first? We pick. All right, we're going to start with you short. We're going to go Mr. Sealy. We're just going to go around.
After Mr. Bates, how are you?
I'm good.
Still having a lot of difficulty at Ruthers Glen Road. I mean, the shoulders are eaten up. The tractor trailers have dug into the shoulders.
Yeah, ongoing.
Yeah, we've.
Fix it. Happens again, fix it, happens again. We should do a project out there.
Yeah, and let's hope it comes through.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there, is there anything that we could do there to that shoulder, at least create another two feet of shoulder or?
Potentially. So really what we're looking at is.
Temporary solution.
Yeah, I'm trying to alleviate the amount of times that we have to go out and maintain it, obviously, right? It's not something, you know, given the, the large trucks that go through there and the consistent maintenance issues that we have, I think it's time we look at something a little harder than putting 21A and crushing run.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, so, you know, when that comes back to, I've got to put something in the plan. We've got to have the funding to do it. It's going to have to be some asphalt shoulders. It doesn't have to necessarily be to put down with a paver, but we need something a little bit more solid out there. So I hear you. I, I've written it down and I'll have to put together a plan.
Is there, you have any idea when I can get some feedback? I mean, I listen to this every day.
I know.
From folks driving down Ruthers Glen Road and coming to Carmel Church.
Yeah.
And really with, with, without any let up, it's, it's actually worse.
Yeah.
I mean, to the point now, they're, they're stopping in the middle of the road before they turn in. Even though it's not time to be there, they're, they're causing backup. So we, we have to do something that's extensive to ensure that we can continue and have a flow of traffic.
Sure.
Up and down Ruthers Glen Road.
Sure. I, I think some of our, our challenges, and I'm, I'm not going to stand up here and make excuses necessarily, because I think something's going to have to change. But, you know, we are confined a little bit by what we have and, and right of way. Being, you know, prescriptive easement, right of way at different locations. You know, we've got 15 feet from the center line of the road on a lot of these secondary roads. But at, at the end of the day, I think it's going to take going out and putting some asphalt down on what is currently a supposed to be a gravel shoulder and, and hoping that that's going to hold until we can do something a little bit more. So I, I need to put a plan together, Mr. Underwood.
Anything you do, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Sealy.
Thank you. Mr. Bates, I still need to take a ride with you on Sparta Road, but, and I went and looked at what was done. Have you seen what they did with the? That, that didn't fix anything, you know? It's, it's now worse than, I mean, there's not a hole, but what's there is just short of a hole.
Yep.
I don't know what the answer.
We're not talking about the drainage issue, right? You're talking about.
Well, I'm telling you, there was a drainage issue that was parallel to the road.
Right.
And so they came in and I don't know what they dug up.
Yeah.
But what they patched, looks like they did it in five or six different passes. So there's a patch about a foot across and then there's a patch on top of that patch, and then there's a patch behind each one of those patches. And it's just short of the hole. You know what I mean? It's not as bad as the hole was, but it's not. And I still need to have you and I take a ride down Sparta Road and look at what's really going on.
Sure.
I'll catch up with you now that there's not the threat of snow and all the other time, time I thought about it, you know, it was just about snowstorm time. So.
Absolutely.
Now that the weather's a little nicer, but I'd like to do that.
Yeah, let's get something on the calendar.
All right. All right. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Good evening. You can't skip over me if I can jump quite that far. Just, just a quick one. If you would have your staff keep an eye on the drain, water drainage path at the Royal Farms, you know, we had that big downpour the other day.
Right.
And when I came through, if you're going north, come through and people could go from 17 and, and go take a, a right to go north. That whole lane there that takes them down to turn into Royal Farms was just full of water.
Really?
So granted, there was a lot of rain coming down, but I'm not sure I've ever seen it like a.
The right turn lane into Royal Farms was, was underwater, is what I mean.
No, the right northbound lane, right, right after you get through the intersection on the right, you could go over to that lane that takes you into Royal Farms. There was standing water there. So if, when a car comes across, it throws this big sheet of water up and over. Also, thank you for having them, or maybe they didn't put the stop sign for the right-hand turn coming out to go north and
Yep.
that helped, except it keeps getting pushed over. And that's probably why we needed it there, but maybe we need something more than one that they put up there.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's been a couple of close calls, but other than that, every, everything is fine. And thank you and your crew for all they do.
Yep. And I will definitely take a look. Obviously, water on the, in the lane is never something we want. So we're going to take a look at that.
Yeah. And, and it's, it's just much appreciated for everything you do do.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Underwood. Forehand.
I see the resemblance. All three of them. Sorry. It was 1-800-F-O-R-E-Road? All right, just making sure.
I'm sorry, F-O-R.
F-O-R, it seems to say my name.
Yeah.
Thank you, because I'm going to figure out exactly where the hole in, in the middle lane of Interstate 95 is and then call it in tomorrow morning after I hit it.
I would, I would definitely recommend doing it.
Is it possible, or what is the process for us to be able to add shrubs to the median of Ladysmith Road?
Under permit.
Just a permit.
Yeah, just, I mean, we'll, we'll have to take a look at it and make sure it's not blocking site distance, if, if site distance is even needed, depending on where it's at. But, yeah, as long as you are maintaining it, we could, we can discuss.
Okay. And thank you for the no U-turn from the center lane sign.
No left and no U-turn.
Correct.
I didn't feel like that was something we should have had to do, but.
And it did get run over about a week, a week after.
Yeah, okay.
But it got back up quickly. So that was a positive thing. So thank you for being responsive. I still honk at people that are, that are still sitting there. They can't see the sign because it's right beside them at that point.
One other thing that we, we've discussed is, you know, if, if the sheets would have some internal signage to direct folks out to the signal if they want to go to 95, like some route shields. So if, if we see continued issues with people not being able to get into the slip lefts, and let me know, and, and we can pursue with sheets and see if that's something they'll be able to.
All right. And we, my last little thing about that little section of road is we do have an individual that is driving on the bike path, the paved, the asphalt bike path near the intersection. I think they reside there, but they use it a little too liberally.
Okay.
They pull a van up in front of the house.
Are they parking there?
It's either staging there or it's parked there for a little while.
Feels like impeding traffic.
But it's, yeah. I just don't know. I mean, it's, it is on that, blocking that entire asphalt bike lane, but.
I'll take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. Just, just so the board will know, we got a email from Marcy Parker, who's the district engineer, telling us about the May 6th meeting. And she sent it out Thursday, last Thursday. It was a blind copy. I don't even know if you got it, but.
I was off last week, so I don't remember seeing that. Okay.
She's, she's sent it out Thursday. It's just a reminder, if the board needs to see it again, it wouldn't help if you send it out again. I would do appreciate it. I, I have a, an interdepartmental thing. The Department of Historic Resources throws up highway markers, you know, historical markers.
Correct.
Things of that nature. And, and some are close to the road and, and some are where we should stop and read them. Who maintains or creates that pull-off lane? Is that a VDOT thing? Do I have to request it?
Ooh, it, it probably, the answer will probably vary. If it's something that is for their specific sign, it could be back on them. I can look at some plans and see if there's any notes, depending on where it's at.
You know, policy standard, but if there's not, I mean, we can talk offline.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's one off of 301, the.
Sure.
Who was the resident before you?
Lynn Keenan, Sean Nelson.
Lynn, yeah, it might have been Sean.
Okay.
They, they actually put some gravel down in front of this particular one.
Yep.
And of course gravel after a couple of years, shutting the grass.
Yep.
So if we could work on that. And then I have a citizen who's working with somebody else. I forgot the name, but since you're here. We're talking about Milford sidewalks.
Yes.
And that is you directly responsible for that?
Yes, I believe that the Milford sidewalks are very much within the right of way and under VDOT's maintenance. And, and we are, I think they're probably working with Richard Spurlock, my project engineer.
Yes.
And we are similar to what we did with Bowling Green years back. It's not something that we can do all at once, but there may be an opportunity to kind of put a plan together and over the years, look at replacing some of the sidewalks in kind.
Okay. Now, now where would that fall? Would that come, I mean, do I need to go directly to Richard to see what the processes, the progress is, or when you come back in the next quarter, you'll be able?
Yeah, when I come back, I'll, I'll go ahead. In fact, I think he even asked about putting a slide on here for it. And I said, hold off for now, just because we, we don't have the identified funding for it. But as we're doing, we're working on our next fiscal year at, at this time, and it might be something we can try and slide in there.
Okay, great. I, I think he had a meeting with one of the residents last week, the week before. So I, you know, I do appreciate that. And last but not least, this is really critical. The turn lane at the convenience center.
Yes, sir.
Is actually a lifesaver. I mean, you and I have talked about that before, but I dump my trash there on a regular basis. And I have been in front of an 18-wheeler who was barreling right behind me, trying to make that turn without running into either the fire hydrant or the fence on the other side of the mailboxes. And this is actually going to save lives. I really do appreciate it. It's very important. Thank you.
Those are the best kinds of projects, especially when we've got the right of way to go ahead and, and do it. So.
I appreciate it. That's all. I want to end on a thank you note.
Thank you.
Mr. Black.
Yeah, just a few. I'm, I'm not, we don't need to talk about it here, but offline, I would like to talk to you. We still haven't met in regard to Anderson Mill and Trivet. I'd like to get out there with you at some point, set up an appointment where we can go out there and, and look at it. And the same thing, I just need to talk to you about where we are with the back entrance of L-LPOA. We can talk about that off, offline as well. We don't need to get into that. One thing, if you could, on the trash pickup, because we do, there's adopt a highway that Lake Landor is heavily involved in, and we go out there, you know, probably five, six times a year. And I know you guys say they're picking up trash, but there are many times where we're picking up shards of trash. Because after a mowing. So I don't know if there's a recourse that you guys have, because, you know, when you mow over, you know, whatever the trash is that you're mowing over, one piece becomes.
Yeah.
You know, multiple pieces that have been run over. So I don't know what, you know, if there's something that you have in the, I don't, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if you can make sure that they're actually doing it, because they may say they're doing. So I don't know what, you know, if there's something that you have in the, I don't, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if you can make sure that they're actually doing it, because they may say they're doing it, but they're, say they're doing it and actually doing it before mowing. Because when we see a mowing, for example, it's a lot easier for us to, to go out, pick up the trash, because we can see it, you know, during, during the summer months, the grass grows high or whatever, you can't see it. And then it gets mowed, it's a lot easier to see. Well, I mean, you, you know what I'm saying? So if you could just talk to them about, um, possibly dealing with that. The other thing too is, um, and I know you fixed it and it's not in my district, but, um, I travel up there with the back way a lot of times, Dorret Road, um, and the, the YMCA area. The, the road was, the road was, something had happened to it years ago, and right there at that turn, it kind of collapsed. And it's back to the same situation. You guys fixed it and it's back to kind of, um, not as bad, but it's, it's moving in that direction again. And I don't know why it is, if there's some sort of something that in the substructure that needs to be fixed. But it, we're going back to where we were a couple of years ago before the fix.
Okay.
Uh, and then lastly, um, I just wanted to know real quickly, the, you guys put out a survey on the, uh, Lady Smith Road, um, intersection. And I was just kind of curious, what do you guys do with that, um, with that survey? What is VDOT doing with that survey?
The Lady Smith Road?
Yeah, yeah, the Lady Smith Road and, um, the survey, yes.
I'm sorry, you're talking about the interchange.
Yeah, interchange, yeah, the interchange.
Yeah, so, um, that's getting feedback from the public about what, what they see as some of the issues there.
Okay.
And it's just helping our consultant kind of as they go through, similar to what we did with the Route One corridor study. It's the public involvement phase, um, and there's eventually, they're gonna be holding some, some hearings, uh, if you will, that, um, will involve the public, similar to what we did for the Route One corridor. And they'll have the opportunity to come and comment and, and give feedback and, and everything else. So it's just, it's helpful information for our consultant and for us. And as much as I, I have people that, you know, live in Caroline and work in Caroline, um, we don't, and, you know, the, the folks in Caroline are also our eyes and ears, so.
Yeah, no, and I, and I appreciate it. I just like, I, some of the social media posts I see, um, you know, I, I'm wondering if those same people are putting it, are filling out your survey. And, and probably, yeah, it's the worst intersection on the East Coast or whatever, you know, and I just, I laugh. I said, you haven't been to Thornburg yet. But anyway, all right, so anyway, that's, I appreciate it. So that's all I have, Madam Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Sealy.
One other thing, you know, there has been all kinds of markers put alongside the road that are those flags. And I've had a number of phone calls. They're just, I, I, I think some of them have been for, for broadband cables. But they're all along the roadway and I've gotten in Sparta probably two dozen phone calls. Blaming VDOT or is there a VDOT regulation on that? I said, you know. What is?
Are you talking about the misutility markers, like the?
They, they look like misutility markers, but they go on, they're all laughing, so they know what I'm talking about. They go on for forever. And, and they just stay forever and everybody's like, does anybody come and get these? And because when they put them down, they're there before they do any, is there any communication with you guys about those?
So if they're doing work, they have to come and get a permit, but if they're just calling in a misutility ticket, probably not.
So if they're, if they're doing work, are, are they supposed to pick them back up or? I don't know what to say to anybody about this. I, I drove down and saw a bunch and.
Yeah, it's, it's good. This is a good feedback, because I think that whoever the permit holder is, the person that's going to be digging in the area, whether it's, you know, Verizon installing a line, they would obviously pick their flags up. But if it's, you know, i- it could be any kind of private developer, um, they should do that, right? Like I go back on my property, if I had to call in a misutility ticket and I picked a little yellow flags up and I throw them in the trash after I'm done. That should be the way that's happening. It probably isn't, is what I'm hearing, so that's some feedback to the permit holder.
I'm just saying, I've now got probably miles of these things.
Yeah, and guess what happens when nobody picks them up? They end up in the ditch and then they clog a pipe up and then, you know.
Or they end up in somebody's tire. I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, I've already been down that road, so I'm just, I, I didn't know, so if there's a permit, it should say in there somewhere they're responsible for pulling those back up.
Yep, I, I, I'll follow up with my permit section and that might be something that we can add into, to the permit and make sure that we have some more stern language in it perhaps.
I'm just saying, I've gotten about a dozen phone calls. And people have stopped me in the grocery store and said, hey, what about those flags? And I'm like, I, I don't know.
Right.
Anyways, I forgot to put that on my list and why I, I just remembered, so thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anything else? Mr. Forehand has two quick follow-ups.
All right, um, C T B is Commonwealth Transportation Board.
Yes, sir.
Just to make sure I'm clear, that, and that is June eighteenth.
Yes, sir, that is the meeting in Richmond, um, downtown.
Okay, and how did the Lake Caroline entrance score? And are we optimistic that's gonna get approved by the C T B?
Ultimately, it's gonna be up to your Commonwealth Transportation Board member and, and really the whole committee, but as of right now, the, it is recommended for funding for a project, so.
Chances are good.
Laura Sellers is your C T B member.
Miss Sellers is.
Yeah, so again, she, I'm sure, I assume will be at that, uh, May meeting for Fredericksburg District.
And that's open.
And that's, the commissioner comes, uh, you know, secretary's office comes, uh, Department of Rail, uh, that's where a lot of the folks are there. So that, that is the moment to come and, and support that project. And for what it's worth, I know that the folks in Lake Caroline, uh, wrote at least a hundred emails and I, I got all of them, and so did Laura Sellers. And Leon got a whole bunch himself, I think, so in support of the project, so she is very aware that it, uh, people want it. But I, I, I don't say that to, to let off the gas. I think it's important to come and, and show and represent, not say that this is a, a want and a need in Caroline County.
Okay. That's it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Bates.
Always.
Next on our agenda is an update of the Verizon broadband expansion.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members. I'm David Sadler, your I T Director, but also serve as the, uh, Coordinator for the Broadband Expansion Efforts here in Caroline County. I was here just a month ago and to give a brief overview of both projects. However, tonight, we're here to focus just a little bit more on the VADI twenty twenty-three Caroline West Project. In January twenty twenty-two, the board authorized the release of an R F P to find a partner, uh, on the application for a VADI twenty twenty-three grant cycle to address an estimated eight hundred and forty locations west of ninety-five that were unserved. The Caroline Broadband Advisory Committee met multiple times, uh, considering those returns on the R F P and decided to recommend Verizon as a partner on an application for the VADI twenty twenty-three grant cycle. I would like to recognize, uh, Jason Barlow, who is here tonight, and Jason Jacobus, the Vice Chair, uh, of that same committee. Uh, they worked really hard in attending multiple meetings to work through about ten, um, responses to the R F P and, and rate those. So they worked really hard, uh, in deciding up, uh, who to recommend to you to work with as a partner. The Caroline Board of Supervisors selected Verizon as that partner in the VADI twenty twenty-three grant cycle. In May of twenty twenty-three, Caroline County was awarded over two million dollars along with the county and Verizon contributions. A project was estimated to be seven point five million dollars for the project to cover those residents west of ninety-five. By October of that same year, the contracts were finalized on the project and the design and engineering started. Tonight, I would like to introduce to you, uh, Jamie Bowman, who served as the Project Manager for Verizon and was integral in making sure that the project stayed on schedule or ahead of schedule throughout the entire project. Jamie?
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for having us here tonight to talk about our Verizon Caroline County Broadband Initiative Project. So as David said, in October of twenty twenty-three, Verizon and Caroline County executed a contract which would build out to a hundred and eight, eight hundred and fifteen unserved, underserved addresses in Western Caroline County. We had an eighteen-month build duration, which means that over that course of the time, Verizon needed to build out our network to serve those eight hundred and fifteen addresses and it needed to complete in the, uh, April twenty twenty-five timeframe. So as soon as that contract was executed, the teams got to work and we delivered on that promise of completing the project by April of twenty twenty-five. So I just wanted to highlight today a few of the project highlights, uh, that completed in that timeframe. So over the course of eighteen months, we have installed a new next-generation O L T equipment in our Lady Smith Central Office, which supports multi-gig broadband service. Uh, from there, from the Lady Smith Central Office, we have deployed over sixty-two miles of fiber optic cable out to those addresses in Western Caroline County, bringing them FiOS broadband service. Our first addresses were made open for sale in the June twenty twenty-four timeline. And we are happy to say that that was about three hundred and forty addresses that were open for sale at that time and service was available to them. So through the remainder of the year and into early twenty twenty-five, we completed the build and we were able to report a hundred percent completion in February, two months ahead of schedule, uh, to all of those awarded addresses. And through March, we have three hundred and fifty service installations that have been completed, which really is a testament to, uh, the residents of Caroline County looking forward to this broadband service being delivered. And we are thrilled to report that we are continuing to see new service orders come in, um, month over month. So while I'm standing here and I have the privilege of reporting all of these great accomplishments, um, I would be remiss in not recognizing that behind me is a, a team of Verizon employees across multiple organizations that worked very hard to deliver this project on time. We had representation from organizations such as Engineering, which took the time to design and plan and, um, engineer of the addresses for this project, as well as our operations team, which they are the ones that actually did the physical construction. So I'm sure many of you have seen them out on the roadways. These are the technicians that have placed the fiber, spliced the fiber, tested and turned up all the equipment necessary to run our broadband network. And we are very, um, you know, proud of the network that we have delivered in Caroline County. So with me tonight, I brought with me just a few representatives from those organizations. We have Sean Freeman from our Engineering Department, as well as T J Jesse and Mike Starr from our Construction Department. So I just would like to, before I turn it back over to, to David, I would like to thank the board for the opportunity that you presented to Verizon to be able to bring broadband service to your community. And I'd also like to take a minute and thank David Sadler. He has been an excellent, excellent partner with Verizon. Uh, he has been there and a big resource for us. Any questions that Verizon, the project team may have over the course, um, of the eighteen months, he was quick to respond and he really has been a champion for broadband service in Caroline County, and I appreciate all the, um, partnership that we had together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before she goes, can I have a quick question?
Yeah. I guess you got a couple of questions before I do this, Mr. Thomas.
Just, and, and I noticed it's, it's a great thing that, that you've got all, uh, the Verizon options, they've got FiOS and all that.
Yes.
Any chance that, that Verizon will replace the copper in the rest of the county?
Our copper replacement program is, um, nationwide or across the whole entire Verizon footprint. So every year we have more and more capital dollars that are allocated to this initiative. I don't have a specific schedule for Caroline County, but we're always reinvesting in the networks around Virginia.
So that was a no?
I, I, I don't have a.
Thank you.
Not a no, in the future.
Okay.
Mr. Sealy.
I noticed that you had three hundred and fifty, um, connections out of eight hundred and fifteen. Is, is that a good number in terms of?
That is actually an excellent number, um, in terms of a take rate. So I just want to caveat there, the total was eight hundred and fifteen. I would say about four hundred of those locations came online in the February timeframe. So we're talking, you know, what, six weeks, eight weeks that service has been available to these residents. So once an address becomes, um, open for sale within our systems, it kicks off approximately a six to eight week direct marketing campaign. So they would be getting, you know, direct, you know, like the flyers, the mailers, uh, alerting them that the service is available to them and how to move forward with placing their service order. So it is something that continues to grow over time in terms of new service installations. So Verizon is very happy with the take rate so far.
I just wasn't sure how that, I mean, I know some of those addresses don't have houses necessarily, so I was just curious what that take rate was, if that was, you know, low, medium, high.
It's high.
Okay.
It's a, it's great, and actually Caroline County is our poster child, thanks to David Sadler for, um, service installations. A lot of great information has been getting out to the community about the service availability that these residents have.
And, and our chairman of our broadband committee as well, because he's been to events, he's been to Bowling Green Fall Festival, the fair, to advertise what was coming. So I've got to give the whole committee, um, the, the Citizen Committee a lot of credit, because they've put a lot of time in. I, I'm just glad we're there, because we talked about this for years and everybody said, oh, it's five years away. And, you know, it's funny, five years goes by and now we're there. It, it's.
Well, the other thing is we have to thank Verizon for being part of the team, because.
We didn't have anybody.
We got grants for the whole county, because we had you as part of the whole county solution, so. Thank you. Even though we don't have copper, we want to thank you for that.
Well, you can't get rid of all, I mean, getting rid of all copper is tough, but, but no, thank you all for, for, for what the committee did and for you guys stepping up, because we didn't have anybody for that region. So thank you.
Mrs. Long, it was big.
Mr. Black.
Just on that note, I mean, you've probably been sitting here, we're, we're a quickly growing county. And, um, there's other places, like we have lake communities, Lake Caroline, Lake Landor, Pendleton, on the western part of the county, Lady Smith Village. Is there, that would be an explosive amount of customers too. I mean, way more than you're looking at here. Is there any thought of, hey, look, we're going into these communities now? I know you'd have competition with, um, Xfinity and so forth, but has, has there been talk about like, hey, look, we're, we're looking to, to go in there, because competition is always good?
Absolutely, and the fact that we've laid the groundwork, meaning we have placed the equipment within our central office that delivers the FiOS broadband service. And we have started with the fiber placement around the county. We are continual, Verizon is continually looking at opportunities to expand our network beyond what is already, uh, in service today, so.
Is there anything on the timeframe or?
No, not at this time.
So that's a hard no.
It's, uh, we, we, you know, Verizon continually invests, um, billions of dollars every year within, into our network. So it's, it's something that will be on the table going forward.
Well, since we're a poster child, you know, we could.
You don't have to sell me.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy, for recognizing the committee, because I would like to just reiterate that that's an all-volunteer committee, that comes there and, and works and puts hours in. And a lot of the projects are now at the point where the committee's not, maybe not answering as many questions or giving as much guidance. But we actually had a really good, strong committee of, of experts in, in the field to, uh, to guide a lot of these decisions that we recommended to you as well, so. So then, to wrap this up, uh, with the completion of this project that we're talking about now, uh, VADI twenty twenty-three West, uh, as well as the project that we completed back VADI twenty twenty-one, nearly twenty-five percent of the estimated unserved locations in Caroline County or over thirteen hundred and twenty-six homes and businesses now have a broadband connection available at this time. Once completed, the VADI twenty twenty-three, uh, Caroline East Project will bring broadband availability to the remaining fifty-two hundred previously unserved locations in Caroline County. And a lot of that is thanks to the support that we've gotten from the board in moving these projects forward. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And before you sit down and everyone else in those front rows, I have a resolution I'd like to read. And it states, "A resolution commending Verizon for its partnership with Caroline County and the success of the project Caroline West VADI Grant. Whereas in January twenty twenty-two, Caroline County issued a request for proposals to identify partners for a grant application through the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development's VADI Grant Program for twenty twenty-three. The goal of the grant, one, uh, of the two grants submitted by the county that year, was to achieve universal coverage in Western Caroline. And whereas Verizon emerged as the top-ranked respondent to the R F P based on its financial contribution to the project." based on its financial contribution to the project and its demonstrated ability to complete the work as proposed. And whereas in May of 2023, Caroline County was awarded $2,032,334 of Vatti Grant funding for the project. Verizon in, for, I'm going to play around this thing. Verizon in turn contributed over 4.5 million, or approximately 60% of the estimated cost, with the fund secured and accounting contribution of over $1 million approved by the Board of Supervisors. Project Caroline West was officially launched. And whereas construction commenced January of '24, by March of 2025, well ahead of the project deadline, broadband service was made available to 815 new homes and businesses in Caroline County. Spot audits conducted by the county staff confirmed that the installations met and exceeded industrial standards and advertised prices and speeds were verified as accurate. Now therefore, being resolved, the Caroline County Board of Supervisors hereby commends and expresses its appreciation to Verizon for its partnership, financial commitment, and technical performance, which, all of which were vital to the successful completion of Project Caroline West Vatti Grant Project, adopted the safe day of April 2025. Signed, Charles Cully, Clerk of the Board, Nancy Long, Chairman. And we'd like you all to come up, take a picture with us. All right. Thank you. Well, you must be here. Next on our agenda is update on real estate general reassessment.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, members of the void. My name is Jason Callen. And I'll be speaking with you about the 2025 general reassessment we just wrapped up here in the county. So I figured we'd cover some of the basics first. Purpose for general reassessments in general, of course, is to ensure the equitable distribution of the tax burden. And that's an important point because over time, as we'll see further along in the presentation, properties go up and down, increase and decrease at differing rates. So it's important to come back and reset them all to the appropriate assessment level, so that everyone's treated fairly. And of course, the second reason is to comply with Virginia State reassessment laws, which mandate that counties periodically do this process. So four of the main functions that assessors do across the country, they discover property, they list property, once it's been discovered, they value property, and ultimately with the governing body, tax property. So I have a little diagram here. Discovering property is on the bottom of this little diagram. It's the most important and most time-consuming part. And literally the rest of the process is built upon it. So you can't really list property unless you've discovered it. You can't value it unless it's been discovered and listed, and ultimately you can't tax it. So discovery answers questions like, what is the property? How big is it? What is it like? Usually entails a combination of land records, like deeds, wills, that kind of stuff, and field observations. So the Commissioner of Revenue has dedicated staff who have maintained acreage sizes, zoning records, ownership for many decades. And then also the county uses a GIS vendor to maintain what's called a shape file so that you can render the, you know, approximate shape of each parcel, which does impact value, of course. And then a reassessment team comes along and makes field observations to discover facts, like the condition of the property, quality, building size, that kind of stuff. So listing the property is basically, once we've discovered it, we put it into a uniform systematic approach into a computer system that both we ourselves can use it, the information we've collected. And we also have a duty to pass it forward in time to the next generation of people who will come after us. So, you know, we inherited a set of facts about the county. We come in and edit those facts and then we pass it forward to the next group of people who come after us. It's a very important job. And the next phase is valuing the property. Our goal is to develop a methodology that uniformly distributes a tax burden in a way that approximates market value. And that's a very pointed word, approximate. It's based upon valuing groups of property with a large number of sales. And of course, the goal is to meet state standards and assessment guidelines. This slide is a little bit hard to see, but it comes directly from the State Appraisal Board website, the frequently asked questions page. And question two there goes to sort of define a couple of terms, sales prices, appraisals, and assessments. And the key point or takeaway here is that an assessment is a mass appraisal of property as of January 1st of each year for tax purposes. And then it goes on to state, assessments are based on large numbers of sales that are analyzed to determine the values for large groups of similar properties. So you can compare that to an appraisal, like for a bank or a refinance, where a lot of research is done on a relatively few number of sales to value one property. So it's sort of like two different scopes of work. You're doing the same mechanics, but the process is similar but different. And often the results are similar but also different. So the major accomplishments of the reassessment, we successfully converted to a new computer system. We overcame some legacy data and migration challenges. So for example, there was a small number of properties where there was not a, a record of when the building was actually built. So we had to estimate those in order to make it work into a new computer system. Ultimately, we achieved a lot of our statistical goals as far as overall assessment level, COD and PRD. Those are just basic summary statistics that I'll talk about a little bit later. We would have preferred to finish earlier in the year, but because the, the new computer system wasn't delivered till late in the year, we had to, you know, extend it, but we did complete it within the extended timeline. So how do we evaluate a reassessment? As we said previously, reassessments are based upon sales. Sales are analyzed in bulk. The more you have, the better off you are. Some sales were, sales are qualified and some are thrown out because they don't represent market value. So like a deed of gift, or you're selling it to a relative, or a partial interest, that kind of stuff, foreclosure sale. And then once the qualified sales are there, we trim them, like for outliers, ones that are super low or super high. And then we group the sales by variables such as size of home, acreage, age of home, location, quality of home, et cetera. And then ultimately, we compare and adjust the revised assessments against all those variables and more. And we keep adjusting them until the results are all acceptable. So here's a little highlight of all the sales that occurred in 2024. And as you'll see, as we go on, we considered a lot of sales over many years, but we put the most weight on the most recent sales. Makes sense. It's more reflective of the current market. So of the sales that occurred in 2024, we believe we achieved an assessment level of 98.1. That's where we compare the new assessment to the sale price. And you might be thinking to yourself, well, that's not 100%, right? But it actually is 100% when you consider what's called the upper and lower bound of the confidence interval. So it's kind of like a standard deviation, but the math is a little bit different because it's based on the median instead of an average. So if you take the 90% confidence interval, the 98% nominal assessment level would, would reach up and it would actually be 100%. So it could be sort of like a range, 98 is the nominal, could be as high as like 100 or as low as like 96. And the COD turned out to be 15. So for a county like Caroline where it's not super homogeneous, there's a lot of variation, rural properties, properties in town, commercial properties, lakefront properties, riverfront properties. Anything less than 20 is good. Closer to five is like where you cheated. If you get five or close to that, that you did something called sales chasing, where you just chase and change the sales and not the rest of the values. So that was pretty good. The PRD, well, let's make back up, the COD is a measure of like vertical, I mean, excuse me, horizontal equity. So as you go across the county and you compare, you know, houses that are small in town to properties that are big and 100 acres, it says, how, how good are the assessments in the broad universe horizontally? In the PRD, that is basically the vertical equity standard that we do. So that's sort of like, how are the assessments on low-value properties, medium-value properties, and high-value properties? And the range should be between 98, 103, we're right there at it. So it's a sort of a natural bias against high-value properties because there aren't as many of them in the county, and therefore there's also not as many of them that have sold. So anyway, the results generally align with the state standards.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
You said a term biased against.
Yes, sir.
And is against being higher or lower value?
Well, there's a natural bias against anything that's uncommon. So the most commonly occurring type of property in Caroline is small acreage, like five acres and less, about 1,400 square feet. That's the most commonly occurring property. So if you have anything in the super small or super big extreme, because there's less of them, period, there's also less of them that have sold. And if there's less of them that are sold, there's less information for us to value them. So there's natural bias against anything that's common.
But going back to my question, you say natural biased against. Does that mean they have a higher or a lower value assigned?
Lower.
Lower. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Oh yeah, sorry. Very similar slide, but this is one for, it's just limited to residential sales that occurred in 2024. You can see we achieved basically the same assessment level of 98 with a lower COD because we're just working on houses. The other two numbers are basically the same. So with this slide, we considered 10 years worth of sales. And you might be thinking, wow, that's a, a lot of sales. But you go back to the more sales you have, the better. And we used the federal housing finance agency's consumer, I mean, housing price index data to adjust the sales that occurred in all those years, 2015, 2016, 2017, and so on, to today's market. And then we tested our assessments against all those sale years, and it came up to be a little over 6,000 sales. And the results are very similar. So if you look at 2015 and 2016, the, the time adjustment sort of overshot just a little bit in those two years where they were a little high. And then if you look at 2021, where the market really shot up, it kind of undershot the sales in those. But overall, it's pretty uniform. For, for 10 years worth of sales being adjusted to one point in time, and you test the assessments against all those sales, if you look down that range, it's a pretty tight range, which shows that the assessments, I mean, the time adjustments were effective, basically. Okay, so once you, we're going to be talking about mostly houses now. Once we have developed the time adjustments, we begin to stratify sales by different property attributes. This slide shows the sales in the county from 2015 on to 2024 by decade or year built. And again, as you can see, they're all, the results were all pretty tight range, which we basically came up with a depreciation schedule that covered the whole universe of properties from brand-new houses to houses built in the 1700s. And so the results, I think, turned out pretty good. This was also the, one of the first times that the counties had this ability to do what's called table-driven depreciation and dial it in. The old computer system, everything was kind of manually, hand-to-hand combat. So this is something new for the county. Next, we considered the sales by the size of the home. And we considered a bunch of different groupings. So again, below 1,000 square foot, where 96, you can see 1,000 to 1,497, 1,400 to 1,800, all of them was a pretty tight range. And you can kind of see where the, the sales are showing you, you know, 14 to 1,800 square foot, 1,000 to 1,400 square foot has the most sales there. That just goes to point that the, that's the most commonly occurring type of property in the county. And then each property in the county is assigned like a quality rating. It's sort of like a report card. A is the highest and the best. B is a little bit above average. C is average. D is a little bit below average. E is the lowest quality. So again, they're all a pretty tight range, except for the one outlier, which is A, but you only had three sales of those. And that's over, this is over four years. And the next slide, where we kind of just grouped them up, instead of like the C pluses and the C minuses and the B plus and the B minuses, we kind of grouped them up in just broad categories of A, B, C, and D, and the results are very uniform there. And then again, we stratified even further by major subdivisions. So the results for these various locations in the county, we tested over 30 different subdivisions. And I think we developed special adjustments for maybe half of them. So there we see Brookwood, Caroline Pines, all the, the major neighborhoods within the county. They all came up with a pretty tight range. And again, the goal is if you saw some that were like 80 and the other one was 110, that would indicate a problem. As long as they're within a pretty tight range, they're basically assessed on the same level. And this is again, minor subdivisions within the county. You see Belmont, Rodwood. You see Belmont, Rodwood, those neighborhoods. So as far as overall increases, uh, residential properties increased in bulk by 59%, multifamily by 36%, commercial properties by approximately 57%. And then as far as parcels that are between 20 and a hundred acres, they could or could not have a house on it. They increased by 92%. And parcels over a hundred, a hundred acres increased by approximately 76%. With the entire county, uh, the value of the entire county increasing by 63%. And these figures do not factor in land use assessments, just the market value. So variations in increases or decreases can be expected. The reason being is that we, we did our very best to tailor the, uh, assessments by all those factors, location, where they're located in a subdivision, whether they're in the town or not, the size of the acre, you know, the age, that's why we went to all the trouble of adjusting those things by all those factors. So, um, you may hear people complain about, well, my neighbor's assessment went up, you know, 40% and, and mine went up 80%. That's not fair. Well, they're probably not very similar houses and that's the reason why. So. As far as next steps, um, as far as for public engagement appeals, in Virginia, there's a, um, a two-step process. The first is informal assessor hearings where basically, uh, people who think that their assessment is off base can come in and speak with me or a member of my staff. That's actually not required by the state code. It's typically done as a courtesy. Those are currently scheduled for May 12th to the 23rd. The second step is of course the board of equalization, where both of those, the goal was to hear citizen complaints. For the informal part, we'll offer phone and in-person appointments. And, uh, they'll be here in this building here, just right over there, actually. Uh, that's basically it. Appreciate the opportunity to serve the county and open to questions and board feedback.
So if you want to have a question?
I just, so just to clarify, so the total taxable value of land in Caroline County from the previous assessment to now has increased by 63%?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Sealy?
I, I've been on the board, this is my 18th year, I guess. And this is the most data we have ever seen in a reassessment. I just want to say thanks for all the data and, and explaining to everybody what this means and what takes into account. I've never seen any grading of any of the, of the subdivisions or how homes are graded. So that was news to me at least, to see how that takes place. But my question is, when you say land has gone up 63% and I, Sparta is in my district, most of it's very rural farmland. I've seen some of the sale prices, there's been a few that have been really high. There's been a few that are just, you know, up, up 10, $15,000 over what the average person would actually expect to spend for 50, 80, 100 acres. So when you say that, so is it 63% more than the last assessment?
Well, there hasn't been a market value correction to the assessments for four years. So that's the first thing that I would point out. And then that, the, the 62, 63%, that's the total value of the county, including land and buildings. So in some cases, the land will have increased 62%, but in other cases, depending on the size and the location, it may have just gone down a hair or it may have gone up 10, 20, 30%. Because we, we studied it, you know, based on size and location and of course zoning. So there's no, there's no blanket thing. So no, I don't think the typical, like, you know, 30 acre tract went up 62%. I don't, I don't have that stat in front of me.
Okay. And, and that's what I'm sort of, I guess, tunneling to is that there, there is, there are places where it didn't go up much at all and because of the size. And again, zoning matters, you know, we have land use for a reason. So I just wanted to sort of clarify that. So everybody's now going, you know, my 100 acres isn't gone up 63%, you know what I mean? There's nothing on it. There's, it's, it's in the middle of nowhere and there are no utilities and that kind of stuff. So, cause I have people that are building houses on family land that are paying to bring power to it because it, it's not there and it's very expensive to do that. So I'm just trying to keep us in one lane.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I agree. And I would like to add to the, um, the reason you probably hadn't seen the breakdowns is because the county invested in this new computer system and before you couldn't do that. You couldn't go in and apply an adjustment to like Lakeland or, or Caroline Pines. You couldn't do that. It just wasn't available. So, um, it was a really good thing that they upgraded to the new computer system. And a lot of the factors like the size of the houses, I was able to dial in because they have the new computer system. And also it made the, uh, valuing of the land, it's different, slightly different method, but it's more uniform. So for example, in the county, uh, rural parks of their county, there's really only like three different land schedules. Ones that are close to town and ones that are kind of rural out and then some that are in town, you know? So it's very uniform.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? So that takes us down to, and I would like if the board would approve to take a break now and then come back for, for the, uh, Mr. Colley's presentation. 10 minute break?
Sure.
All right. Let's take a 10 minute break and then come back.
All right, let's get going back to this. This takes us down to presentation from our county administrator.
Madam Chair, members of the board, as you saw on the agenda, I had Alan put tentative because I wasn't sure it would be ready for actual presentation tonight. You know, we just received the the real estate numbers Friday from the Commissioner's office. So I want to go over mainly tonight with you is we need to try to develop a time to have a public hearing on a tax rate. Whether we have finished with the budget or not, if we're going to get tax bills out in time for those to go out to come back in June at all. We've really got to agree because the newspaper now requires a week. So if Pam gets it to the paper tomorrow, it's a week before it runs and it's a week before we can have a hearing. So you can see we're already running against late April and then Commissioner Revenue's got to do some work. And then turn it over to the Treasurer who's got to then do some work and then send it to a company that'll produce the bills and mail them. So you're going to be way into May when that happens. So that's why it's critical. We try to at least agree on something we can go to advertisement with. So as you heard, the reassessment was a sixty three point eight four percent increase overall. And according to the Commissioner's Office and David Watson did a real good job putting a spreadsheet together. That takes a per penny value when you take out the various other programs that pull taxes down due to tax exempt, the elderly program, the veterans program, the land use program, the various things that take away from your overall value. We're going from a per penny value of three hundred and fifty four thousand, seven hundred ninety three dollars and ninety two cent per penny to five hundred sixty six thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars and twenty four cents. So that means your effective tax rate would change from seventy eight cents on the twenty four value to an equalized rate in twenty five value of forty nine cents. So in working with the budget, I've worked to develop as much as I can to offload any need for a tax increase. And right now I'm about at one penny and eighty eight thousand. And what I've got in the budget so far. Expenditures in twenty five were seventy for the general fund, seventy two million, two hundred eighty seven thousand, three hundred and thirty nine dollars. And for twenty six, I've got seventy four million, six hundred and sixty six thousand, one hundred and ninety two dollars and fifty five cents. That's an increase in a general fund of two million, three hundred and seventy eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty three dollars or three point two nine percent. And revenues is seventy two million, one forty five oh seventeen versus twenty six, seventy four million, ten thousand, eight hundred and forty four dollars, which is about eight, one million, eight hundred and sixty five thousand or two point five percent increase in revenues, which leaves that shortfall of six hundred and sixty, six hundred and fifty five thousand, three hundred and forty eight dollars. So it's off in the general fund right now. One penny is five sixty six, seven twenty, which leaves about eighty eight thousand. And so I can go back and kind of massage that eighty eight thousand in other revenues and in some other cuts. And so just for some highlights of the budget, what I've got in is a cost of living against our scale of two percent. So that's on the public utility scale. And the county scale that was adopted last year and a public safety and then in the county plan. There's so with two different step plans. And a proposal for a step increase for everybody with a satisfactory review. So that that would equal around four percent. Some of the steps in the county's plan aren't exactly two percent depending on where they are in the step. So some of those may be a little bit more. But adjust the scale two percent for inflation and to keep pace with the market and then step for a successful year of employment. I have in currently for the schools, an additional nine hundred twenty seven thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars, which is five point two five percent to the operating fund. Two hundred and forty three thousand, three twenty two or seven thousand, two hundred and eighty eight more for the textbook fund. The lease amount stayed the same of one hundred and forty five thousand, eight ninety nine. Bus purchases, seven hundred and sixty nine thousand, eight sixty one. It's about fifteen thousand, two fifty or two percent for buses. I have been able to transfer to debt retirement, reduce that by two hundred and fifty two thousand. I'm going to pay for the Lady Smith Road debt service this year with money from the Proffer Fund from transportation, seeing as how it was serving a lot of that proper money is coming out of the neighborhoods in Lady Smith Pendleton, Lady Smith Village. And that road is clearly serving those people. So pay that debt service to help lower that. The social service fund transfer is forty eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy one dollars more. And it would be a four percent increase for a social service employees, even though they're not on our plan. Our another big increase to the budget this year is comprehensive services. And this is unfortunately Alan's programs. It's been it's been steady. The whole time I've been here, we budgeted two point three million dollars every budget. This year, they were just not going to make it. And so we've had to increase that budget, which then increases our share. So we're going to go up from our share of seven hundred and forty six thousand, eight thirty five to one million, forty three thousand, eight thirty five, which is two hundred and ninety seven thousand, which is thirty nine percent increase in the county share of comprehensive services. But those are kids that we're mandated to serve that we have on the rolls right now. And so with the estimate moving forward, that is a much needed increase in in that program. Transfer to the Don Waste Water System stays the same at one hundred and ninety four thousand, three fifty nine. And debt retirement. Personal property to debt retirement, I'll just leave that the same. So overall total transfers are down eight hundred and ninety four thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. So those are the highlights of what's in the budget. We do have some other costs and mandated things that are up in the utility fund, which Fund Five O Two, I do have, before I'm leaving the general fund, I proposed one employee that was thirty two hours a week go to full time. We've lost that employee. It's hard to maintain a part time employee in that in HR. And then I have one building inspector, they made a valid point of how busy the building program is right now, and they can't keep up and had to, you know, actually hire a part time person to try to help out. And then one in the Sheriff's Office, they've been running their court services as far as all the deputies that do all the multiple courts with a part time person and that hadn't been working out well at all. Because sometimes that person's not working and things change at court and then all these deputies are coming in, we're having to pay and courts gotten canceled. And so the sheriff said that he asked for more deputies, three more deputies. But it is standing, we have funding those, but it did fund a sergeant full time for the Sheriff's Office. So those are the two employees plus a eight hour and benefit employee of employees in the general fund. And utilities fund, we do have, I've lost track of the exact number of those, but there's no transfer to utilities. The utility fund can cover all of its operations and debt service within the budget and we're covering that this year as well. And so there was obviously the utility funds, I mean, the utility system is near doubled in the number of people we have in the system. So we need more workers in there being able to take care of the things that we do in utilities. So those are, those are the highlights. There is no transfer to that fund. Still have a transfer out of the detention center funds, but I lowered that. That's five hundred and seventy one thousand. We plan to transfer, I plan on in the capital improvement funds to pay for all that from fund balance. For the patrol cars, the ambulance and the normal things that I fund in the schools. So that's sort of a high level. I didn't have time to put all that on paper. I'll be able to get that to you soon. But the key is would you be willing to go to fifty cents instead of forty nine to give us the ability to do some of those things? Obviously, if you stay at forty nine, I've got to find five hundred and sixty six thousand plus that eighty eight in cuts.
All right, gentlemen, questions? That was a lot to take in.
Always a lot.
Can I just make a comment, Mrs.?
Yes, Mr. Black.
Mr. Cully, I really appreciate, you know, and I'm not on preparing a budget is a very, very difficult thing. Are you asking us?
Yes, especially when you lose your finance director.
When you lose your finance director, one hundred percent. I'm not saying that, but I have a hard time estimating a tax rate or are you asking us to come up with a tax rate tonight?
To go to public hearing.
To a public hearing. And then once we do that, we can't, we can't go down.
We can go up.
We can go down. We can't go up.
Correct. The equalized rate, you know what that is. It's forty nine cents.
Forty nine cents, right.
That anything more than that is a tax increase would have to be advertised as such.
The hard, the hard part I have right now, though, with this even advertising anything, and I'll just be honest with you, is like, I haven't seen like, I haven't seen, we've seen the recommendations from schools, but I haven't seen like, you know, what is the reason that Sheriff Moser wants, you know, the three more, the three more deputies? I haven't seen any of that. So it's really hard for me to say, hey, look, why aren't we, why aren't we doing this? What, you know, so you're asking me to meet to come up with a tax rate on information that I don't have in front of me. And that's the problem. That's the problem I have. I would like to see, and I appreciate you have those numbers, but I would like to see those numbers myself before I can say, this is my opinion on the tax rate. And I, and I know you gave us some information here. But for me, it's going to be very difficult to say, hey, I think the tax rate should be fifty. I think the tax rate should be forty nine. I don't know. So that's, that's my comment, Mrs. Long. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. Thomas.
Mrs. Cully, I was just trying to make sure I did the quick math. Forty nine cents over seventy eight cents, which is is right now, is saying that sixty two percent, which is going to be the average increase for everybody. Right?
Yeah, that's the average overall. Remember, when he spoke, land was up more or some, you know.
Sixty two percent is the average.
Yeah, sixty three point eight four is what I've got on his paper in front of me from the Commissioner's Office.
Sixty three point eight four. Right, but, but, but I have to have a value to say what the equalized rate is.
Correct.
So that's how you're getting the forty nine cents is the equalizer rate. Okay.
It's almost a thirty cent decrease on our tax rate.
That has nothing to do with the value, because Mr. Mr. Cully and Mark helped me with the spreadsheet of how much you actually pay. The tax rate fluctuates based on the assessment.
Agreed. I'm just saying that
But you can't.
No other locality on the ninety five corridor in the state of Virginia, Maryland, New Jersey, New York, Rhode Island, Connecticut, probably in the Maine, has anything close
To a fifty cent tax?
To a fifty cent tax rate.
The value, but the value of our property has gone up because we didn't do an assessment for six years.
I'm talking about how valuable areas.
But we, we did our assessment during COVID and right after and during late part of COVID and then twenty one, things skyrocketed.
Okay, just, just because my good buddy here, Mr. Forehand says that in two thousand and eight, our tax rate was fifty three cents. And a person paid, real life, a person paid or had a value of two hundred and forty five thousand. That value now is only three hundred thousand. This will make a tremendous jump. I'm just trying to figure out what the average is and one penny represents how much in the tax.
Five hundred and sixty six thousand, seven twenty versus three fifty four, seven ninety three, ninety two, and ninety two cent.
Five sixty six?
Seven twenty.
Versus three?
Fifty four, seven ninety four, rounded.
Ballpark is just good. All right. I, I need to multiply these a little later. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Cully, I know you said you have actual numbers through March, correct?
Yes.
March compared to last March, where, where are we?
I don't remember those off the top of my head. I'll get those. We were running along okay. We got the six months into the Keystone system and then we had to pull the numbers out of AS four hundred and manually put those in a spreadsheet to look at them.
You know, I don't like Keystone anyway, so.
Well, I know, but the Keystone, you know.
I understand about six.
But remember, the revenues are collected in AS four hundred, so.
Absolutely.
Right, so. So, but we, in looking at most numbers, we were running along, you know, fairly, fairly normal, fairly good.
What about December? How were we in December? And January, I should, January, we collected.
Yeah, we, we were under collected real estate and personal property. I think both of them were in the nineties. We hadn't fully collected, you know, people, they collect, they send out delinquent letters. They do, the treasurer does a lot of things to ultimately collect, especially on real estate around usually ninety eight percent, ninety nine percent.
I was actually, what's been our collection rate over the last couple? It's been ninety eight.
Yeah.
We, I hate to use the word.
Then that moves over in that delinquent bucket, which we budget for that to come in in later years.
So if we, we look at the actual from this year and project out to the end using that ninety eight percent collection rate. Where would you be?
Overall, but like fund balance, I think that was one of the things I was going to bring up. This current budget, as you heard Courtney talk about, you know, is budget off a three million app being used out of the fund balance along with a million, one hundred and fifty nine thousand or so out of this CDF fund.
Right.
And then another four hundred and fifty thousand in proceeds from loans that we took out on vehicles that were purchased in this current.
were purchased in this current year, in the, not in the capital budget, but just like a single vehicle here or there in various departments. So I would, I would think, I'd run a spreadsheet on that, because Alan had asked me that, and I, and it looks like to me, if you look at expenditures and revenues and forecast them based on what we had spent, based on what we had collected, we're going to be in that $2 million range into the fund balance.
Into the fund balance.
Wasn't that the number I gave you when I went over that spreadsheet? Maybe 1,900 to 2 million. I don't think we'll be all the way at the 3, because we'll underspend, but I think if spending stays where it's been and revenues stay where they are, I think we definitely will be in the fund balance, over more than we've ever been.
We took 3 million out of the fund balance for last year, correct?
To balance.
To balance this year.
Yeah, to balance this year. Then we bounced before against it, but the year before last, we technically went in about 100 to 300,000.
I think it was 300,000.
Yeah, it was not a lot. But then now we increased spending again, and are balancing again, which means if we were at 300 before, it's easily, we're going to be in beyond that.
And that's where we get into trouble with.
That's when we'll get into trouble with our rating.
Bond rating, borrowing out of the.
Right. And so what, what I've done with this budget is anything that's a one-time purchase, I'm going to pay for that from the fund balance, but I'm not proposing any fund balance transfer to just the general fund. So that's, that's the delta where everything looks right now, is the 600, and I'm not going to cover that number up, but 600.
Our ability to borrow money, then is really critical that we get this right.
Correct. You don't want to be going in, we, we need to raise the taxes enough that we're not going into fund balance in the next year. So the rating age, you can see, we've raised our taxes to cover our spending. We've been gambling for years, and we've lucked out. I mean, we lucked out, we got a bunch of COVID money, and we were able to pay public safety employees and put money in the fund balance and do things that kept us from spending. But that's catching up with us. We've hired more employees in public safety and other areas of the government, and we've given money to schools, and we've done these, and we've done that, and our, we are spending more than we're collecting revenue for. I've showed you that before.
Right. Thank you.
Mr. Sealy?
The 49 cents, I know there are people are going to be going, oh, our, our, our tax rate's going down, but the reality is that prices have increased so much that the average person's probably going to get somewhat, with an equalized rate, somewhat of a tax increase.
They could. Anybody that increased more than the average will pay more. The people that, that were lucky enough, that they didn't go up the average, will actually save a little bit of money, but that's on a house per house basis. And I haven't seen any of that data, so.
There's somebody that's going to pay a lot more.
Oh, yes. Say you went up 100%.
Right.
Then you're obviously going to pay more, even at the equalized rate, much less than another penny. But remember, the, the pennies, in the scheme of things, doesn't change much in your yearly tax rate, depending on what your house is.
Well, one or two or three cents does it. Once you get beyond that, the change is very big.
Correct. I agree.
You know, and the order of magnitude, I don't know anymore, because the value of a cent has gone up so much that I used to, I have the math in my head for the 350, I don't have the math in my head for 566.
566, 720.
I just haven't done it yet.
Me neither.
To figure out what that impact is, but that impact is going to be a little bit larger, but we always hear, I'd rather see you raise it two or three cents than five or six cents later. Last year, and I wasn't here that night, it went up one cent. And if we've got to advertise a rate, and Mr. Thomas and I have been down this road a few times, with, what do you advertise, what do you then go to? I know we're going to have to do something, because it's already April, and by now, we're usually.
Oh, yeah.
We're usually setting the personal property rate at this meeting for Mr. Bassoon, for personal property rates, and giving everybody some idea what the tax rate's going to be. Do you have a recommendation?
I would advertise two cents. That would give you some extra money, if you wanted to put it somewhere that I haven't placed it, or the people I may have cut out of the budget, to try to get us as close to equalize as possible. That was my goal. Because I know it's a large increase as far as reassessment, and it's, it's tough to come in, you know, last year I asked for eight cents. Now, that was mainly over personal property numbers, but, you know, it's, it's tough to stand here as administrator and go, hey, you know, I want a tax increase. So I try to give you a realistic budget, and as creative a budget as I possibly can, and find revenue that I can use, that's in the fund balance, because we have that money, it's just how we use it.
Matters to the.
To rate, one-time capital, or if I buy a fire truck, or I buy an ambulance, or I buy 10 police cars, those things don't bother them. But I put it in, I pay a salary or a light bill, it's a reoccurring expense, then, then that's a problem.
Where are we with personal property? I see Mr. Bassoon in the back. Those values changed much?
They went up, and we have that in. I didn't write that number down, but it seems like to me it's 700, around 700,000 were the numbers that I got from them. And, and I think those are still strong. When I talked to them last week, personal property, the last download they did, everything looked really good. So I think they stand.
So the wild swings are gone, are we?
Well, they're not telling what will happen now with tariffs, so, you know, used cars might get more expensive. But that's still, remember, it's January, so they've done their last downloads, we're stuck with what we are. You know, all bets are off as to what things do next year.
Yeah, I can't forecast that, I'm just.
No, none of us can. I mean, but I've got those numbers, that's increased, that's an increase in, in revenue as well.
Right. I see Mr. Thomas has his mic on. Mr. Thomas, do you have some?
Oh, that was a.
From before?
That was an accident, but I did finish the spreadsheet, so it looks like if your house is worth $486,000, your taxes could go up $130 per year.
Per year, right.
So what, what will one cent do?
They're all, they're all different.
I mean, for, take an average house, take a $400,000 house, what will one cent, what will one and two cents do?
Okay, a $300,000 house in 2024 paid $2,340 in real estate tax over the year. Going up 62%, that house would be worth 486,000, and they'd pay 23181. At 49 cents, the equalized rate, those close. At 51 cents, two cents, they pay 2479, an increase of $139. Of course, I need to double-check the math to make sure, but that's just my quick asking in the background.
Those sound like realistic numbers.
Oh, and, right, and my feeling, and then Mr. Underwood is next in line, is that we borrowed this year out of our fund balance. I just want to make, we could always lower the rate that we advertise, but we can't increase it. Want to make sure we've got enough to strengthen that fund balance, so that when we have an emergency, where we've got it without taking it out of funds that we need, especially where we know we have more expenses coming up in the future. So we can raise it enough to give us a little bit of a cushion, but not to, to hurt people too bad, because we all live here, so we're all paying taxes. Mr. Underwood?
Mr. Cully, just another question, this popped up to me. Our ratio of business revenue versus real estate and personal property, do you have any idea where we are with, are we, are we growing?
No, because, see, personal property, that gets buried in the, the number, I can't see it. That's the kind of thing that's sort of.
Mr. Bassoon, what?
Yeah, and it's private. It's the, you know, they can't really break that out for the public. You know, obviously, we've taken business license up, that some of those revenues are up. One of the big drivers of our increase in revenue is also looking at what our, over six months, what our sales tax was, and that's grown right significantly. And so with some new businesses opening up, Wawa, and some of the other retail establishments, I've taken up meals, the tax, and normal sales tax, so, and interest. Due to the fact that we have a large fund balance, we're making more interest, and we even have some other line items, some sweep accounts, that we're getting interest off of, we didn't used to get Brittany Scott, and so we're actually getting more interest as well. So some of our increases in revenue are those type of things, so.
Because we do have some business in the pipeline for '26.
Correct, correct.
Which is going to then continue to increase that revenue.
Unfortunately, I couldn't look to, you know, obviously, we've got some projects you've approved, and big data centers, but those take a while time to get it off the ground. Even a building goes up, you know, they get the building up and get a temporary CO on it, you know, there's a, you know, billion-dollar bill, whatever, you know, we would get revenue. But I don't see, even if they start in '25, any of them getting those to a CO state until after this budget's over. So we didn't really build in tons of new, and one other thing I would add, and I've probably talked to one of you about this before, but think about this, because of the reassessment, the numbers I'm giving you here have got new construction built in. So on a normal year, that new construction would just be new revenue, but we're equalizing our rate down into, into that new construction, so to speak. We built 311, it's 311 houses, whatever it is. We've got a lot of new buildings that came online during this reassessment, that really not getting the tax revenue for, because it's being, you would want to ultimately look, what was here in '24, what went up in '25, and then new construction over here, but I don't have that number. I just have the total value of what '24 was, the total value of what '25 is, here's your equalized rate. I would love to know what that new construction number is, but I don't have that. So this is what I've got, is 49 cents. You know, that probably, if I had that, you probably could set the rate, and we'd be good, you know, but I don't know what that is. We're equalizing down further than we probably would if we knew what that new construction number was.
But Charlie, on, on that note, a development like Brookwood, which is all new, that's counted as?
Yeah, that's right. That's accounted in there. So it's, what happens is your total assessment, your total billion, building value went from 2,323,328, 2 billion and 300, to 4 billion, it's just buried in those numbers. I don't know what it is. I can't tell you what that new construction value is, I don't know.
But it sounds like we're going to be okay if.
We already know that we're in the fund balance, and he's already saying unless he makes cuts, he's basically at 50 cents.
Correct.
And we have, how long before we actually set the rate?
Not long, next meeting.
Yeah, you need as soon as you can. So there's so much work that's got to go on by both the commissioner and the treasurer, and then we do have a new company sending out the bills. We were using a different one, I don't want to name the name, but they have a newer one that seems to be faster. If you can remember, last year, they were taking a fair amount of time from getting our file to getting things mailed, and so a number of jurisdictions have moved to a different company that seems to be faster. So the treasurer's confident that once she's got the file and can get that checked and over to the new company, we'll get it out pretty quick. But we're still running out of time. I hate to push you, but I just got these numbers. I couldn't come to you at the last meeting and tell you what to set the tie, I had a clue what the number was. I had some ideas, but an unofficial.
So we're setting the rate in two weeks?
No, we didn't.
No, he wants us to set the rate now.
No.
We were in the fund balance.
Right, so we have to go high, and we always bring it low, but what, I mean, he wants us to, the next two weeks, if we get some realization, there was a math there.
We have to come up with some number, the two weeks we set it, yeah.
Gentlemen, Mr. Underwood?
I know, but I can't make it any faster than newspaper.
While they're getting, it is correct, but we, we can drop it, we just can't raise it.
Mr. Cully, one more question. Last seven years, at the end of the day, when, even after we increased the penny last year, which we, which we're now working with this year, but five years previous, haven't we always ended up with a revenue surplus?
We did, but we, we had that abnormal year of COVID and the year after that, all the federal money, so it's hard to divorce yourself of that, to know whether you would have actually come ahead as much when it was just, in my government lifetime, that never seen that kind of money, it was like raining money from the feds.
And I'll take the COVID years out.
Yeah, the last.
Other years.
The last, yeah, the last few years.
I'll take the last two, but, but even though we take the money out of the fund balance, we were able to put that money back in, correct?
We had, we finished strong a couple of years.
We finished strong, right, so. And see, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I know you're conservative with, with the number, which has been good for us to make sure that we're not out of bounds in any way, we're not out of kilter, but I think it is even more crucial that we now take that scalpel to your number to see if, in fact, we do need to have a tax. And I voted against a tax increase every year, and I think I've been right almost every year, because we haven't really needed it, quote, unquote, needed. We always need money.
And, and, and I would agree with that to, to a degree. And if you, if you remember, there were departments that ran six, average six, eight employees short, couldn't get them hired, well, I don't have that now. So there's some changes on the ground from, if you kind of want to look at history.
Right.
That maybe not playing out. We've hired a significant number of people that we pay, we don't run with the, I got one vacancy in fire and rescue.
Right.
I don't think I have any right now in the sheriff's office. So, I mean, I, we are running, you know, somewhat fully staffed. We've been understaffed in finance, but.
There's one thing we never really factor in, because at every board meeting just about, we always pay for something out of the fund balance. Now, do you know what we, the total number of things we pay for out of the fund balance this year is, or last year, or whatever?
Yeah.
That's money that should have been in the end, into fund balance in the end.
Right, correct.
You know, which would say we did a better job than we even think, but we just spent, what, 150,000 last week for some public work stuff, right?
Correct, correct. And, and, and we do, historically, most departments underspend their budgets somewhat. So it is, it's a, remember, when you're, we're working on this right now, we'll be spending it next April and May. So you, it's a guessing game, that you try to look at your history, you try to look at what things are there, but our biggest expense in a general fund is employees, and health insurance, and things that, they're all up. Y'all graciously picked up health insurance, so now I'm budgeting 26, 26, Jennifer, help me. Yeah, for a family plan. I don't know whether somebody's going to take that if they're a new employee. I budget what they're currently taking, if they're an employee, but if I've got vacancies or new, new positions, I'm budgeting that much money now, up from what it was in the past. And while I'm talking, I couldn't have gotten this much done without Jennifer Ernest's help. She's been a godsend in the finance department all this time, since Tamika's been gone. And, and budgeting wasn't what she had, that was not her, what she had been involved in really in the past. So it's been a learning curve for her, but she's been extremely helpful to me in this process. And we've, you know, been working on this and double-checking the numbers, double-checking to make sure that we haven't left any employees out, or vacancies out, or those type of things. We had some problems last year with the Open Gov software, because you remember, we've had to come back and fix those things. So we've, one of the things that's been taking so long is we've been working through that with software to make sure we've got everything captured, so we would understand what those, what those costs would be.
On, on our total budget, for the, for the county, you know, we raised it one cent, which was 330 last year, 350.
354 last year.
354 last year, but I wager you that we're going to have 354 left, plus something.
Well, I hope so, because like I said, we got a $3 million that we.
Right, so.
That we, that we didn't have any taxes or fees or revenues for.
I'm just being generous, because I know we're going to have way more than.
I'm hoping for a couple, a couple million.
Over the year, over the, so I'm, I'm going to bet you, so if we raise taxes, if we, if we do, we equalize the rate, and then we said we, we bump it up a penny or two, my only concern, again, is for the taxpayer, we're telling the taxpayer that we need this, and I want to make sure, again, our scalpel is sharp enough that we, that I can sit in a constituent meeting and say, we raised the two cents because we didn't, or we needed, or we, we expect this to happen, and not be able to say, which I have been able to or we, we expect this to happen and not be able to say, which I have been able to say for the last five years, oh, and by the way, we did have a surplus last, uh, excess revenue, not surplus. Revenue over expenditure, we had increased revenue, right?
And, and what I would add to that is if we weren't spending in the fund balance, that I'm worried we're going to spend in, and we went in a little bit last year, you could paper over it and say, hey, we're going to take this out of the fund balance, but we cannot on paper.
I know we can't, I know we can't do.
We've got to balance. And so I have to have a way to have no transfer from the general fund balance to the general fund for just.
And that's the hardest part, that's the hardest part for me, because two and two is not making four.
Right. And I, and so I, I, I agree with you. I think at the end of things, if we say you went up two cents, I don't, I think you will definitely have a, a balance next year. At the end, so you're all the way around to June of 26, you'll be in good shape. But that, remember, that's that rating agency is going to, they get our budget, they get our audits and our budgets and go through those. And you just don't want to lose your rating, because they could be five years.
I know we don't want to, we're very hard to get the rating. I, I, I do know that. We were in dire shape back in 2010, 11. I, I, I understand that. And we want to keep our rating and increase our rating to ensure that we can, when it's time to borrow, we can borrow money.
Good, good interest rate.
For, yeah, at a good interest rate. So I do understand that. So it's, we're, we're kind of in between a rock and a hard place with, with looking at revenue, looking at expenditures, and you see a dollar amount that you believe is surplus for a nasty word, which is not really a surplus, but, and then you say, well, we still got to increase our taxes by two cents, just to be on the safe side.
To, to be on the paper side. The paper says your budget is balanced. And like I said, I've looked everywhere I can to use general fund, fund balance to pay for things that are not a problem, been working by email, Courtney, can I do this? No, they'll still, that's still bad. They'll, you know, can I pay debt service? It's a one-time debt service. No, it's an ongoing debt service payment. You can't do that. So I've tried to come up with any way to use some fund balance. And I've got in there every way I can possibly use other money, fund balance money, proffer money to pay for things that we can, but I'm still that delta short with those things that I've done. And I, and I think I've put forth, you know, a reasonable, a reasonable budget. Obviously, we still fighting inflation, we're still fighting to try to hire employees with everybody around us that pays better. So I don't think that cola of 2% and a, a step, if you've got a good satisfactory performance evaluation is a, is an over. I don't know what any other counties are doing, but I don't think it's way out of line with what anybody's doing. I think the state's at 3% or something like that, but.
I know King George flat funded. I think King George flat funded, I think.
Right.
Can I ask one, one last question? Mr. Colley, would you get us last year, how much money we took out of the fund balance?
Sure, I think I have that, I'm pretty sure Jennifer has that, so we'll be able to get you that tomorrow.
Last year.
We keep a track of that.
And this year.
Yes, we keep a track of that.
Okay. And, and we also need the personal property number, so we could balance what the real taxes are.
But if we need to vote tonight, can we, is there anyone we could?
Gentlemen, what we need to do tonight is do an advertised rate.
Right, yes.
And a date.
And that will, and a, and a date for the, for a meeting.
And Mr. Pesona said they need, they need the 23rd. Alan, can you speak to that?
And then we come back and set the rate. We can go down, but we can't go up. We have to have a public hearing.
I, I think what we need to do after talking with the commissioner's office and, and Chris and Pam is send the notice to the Freelance Star tomorrow, run it on April 16th and a hearing on the 23rd and adopt the rates that night. Probably call a special meeting for the 23rd. Which you're already running the public hearing notice, so it's, it's a pretty simple process. Chris and I were just talking about that.
23rd is the.
Wednesday. So you have a, you have a meeting on the 16th with the schools next Wednesday, week from tomorrow, and then there would be the file on Wednesday. That's as soon as we could get it pulled off.
Can we make that special meeting the 24th?
That's a, the commissioner.
I've got personal issues.
Yeah, so do I. I mean, I can't do the 24th though.
Right, 24th. You live with that?
I mean, if you can't be here, or, I mean, anyway, they would prefer the 23rd, but if you can't be here, then y'all want to agree to the 24th. I can't do it in front of the 23rd. The 23rd is the earliest we can get it pulled off. And part of that is the paper now takes longer than they used to. Used to get, get a, Pam will tell you, used to get, get a notice in two or three days, but now it's a full week they want to have it before it'll run. Well, you don't even, that's one of the things that I've bumped up is advertising.
I have no hard anything on those.
23rd is my wedding anniversary. I'd like to have another one.
Yeah, don't tell her you've got a meeting, you couldn't help it.
I'm sure some of you would like to have another meeting too.
Two cents.
22nd, 23rd is the earliest.
And we're just going to set the tax rate?
Hold a public hearing and set the tax rate.
Oh, we got to hold a public hearing, yeah.
And we can go over the budget if you want, stuff like that, but, you know, the, the key is hold a public hearing and, and set the tax rate. And work on budget if you want, that would be great. I'll have plenty of stuff to show you about.
When is the latest we could do this?
The problem is we're bumping up against the treasurer. 24th is a planning commission meeting in here.
We could meet in there.
Oh, I don't know, do you have any public hearings? They've got public hearings too. Yeah, the 23rd is.
Take a move. Really? Who's going to have more people?
Probably us.
Right.
Maybe, I mean, you know, we didn't have that many last year.
Depends what time the.
But depends what number you want to come up with.
We can't do Friday. You're, you're getting into this mailing of stuff.
Right, yeah, the longer you postpone that, the worse the mailing gets.
You're hitting a different trigger. Can't do that.
23rd, 23rd.
So that's the only date that we have that we can do it. So why are we looking at our calendars?
What time is the planning committee?
I can do the 24th.
Yeah, then I can want to go early. Yeah, the public used to have 7:30.
The problem's going to be filming both. I don't think you're going to be able to do both.
Maybe. But yeah, it's, it becomes a, you know, logistic nightmare trying to have two in here or in the same building.
Can they be early?
They've got advertised public hearings. They've already advertised public hearings. You could, but you're, you're, you're normally 7:30 for these type things. So then, you know, what is your criticism if you start changing the time on a tax hearing?
Yeah. Let's just do, I mean, last year, Mr. Sealy, you were having.
I would, last year I was in Huntsville, Alabama, flying a project. There was nothing I could do when you on.
I mean, it's not, I mean, sometimes people, I, sometimes.
You have plausible deniability.
Yeah.
You, if you're not here, you have plausible deniability of whatever the rate gets. I know, I know.
So it sounded like the 23rd.
Yep. Now we just need to figure out the, the rate.
Correct.
Well, we don't have to figure, we just have to advertise.
Yeah, we're, we're, the rate you're going to advertise.
We have to advertise some sort of rate.
Right. Advertise 53 cents, we can always come down.
You can always come down. But.
We'll go to 52.
No, 50, you can always come down.
It doesn't matter, because.
You can, you can always come down.
That's not going to be the rate.
52. That way, in case, in case something comes in in the next two weeks, then a miscalculation, uh, has my point wrong, something.
I've had that happen, but I'm hoping not. Yep.
That's three cents. I can't imagine that we go more, more than three cents.
All right, so we have.
As we find a major error, but I haven't been able to find that, so.
So making a motion to advertise a rate of 52 cents.
The motion, we advertise a rate of 52 cents for the public hearing.
Second.
23rd.
23rd of April.
7:30.
We got a second, a motion of second, all in favor?
Opposed discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah, I, I, since I haven't seen any numbers yet, it's really hard for me to, to vote on this. And to me, I'd rather err on the shite of going up, because I can always go down, I can't go up. Um, and I haven't seen any numbers from, you know, I know that the sheriff wanted three more deputies. We have a record number of calls in 911. I mean, I haven't seen statistics that some of them want to justify. So to me, I'd much rather go much higher than I can always come down. Yes, I know it's a burden on the, on the citizens, I understand that.
And you, you could do those three deputies in, in two cents. I mean, they'll fit in that two cent number. So if you go three cent advertise, you've got room to do that. Remember, it's each penny is 5.66.
1.7 million dollars.
Right.
Three cents represents.
Right. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I hear what you're saying, but I.
But that gives me no, no room for negotiation with the schools.
It, well, they, that's, right now, their cut's 1.2, 1.2 million. So if you advertise three cent, you could get that as well. Because then almost another 1.1, almost 1.2 in that extra two cents.
Okay.
So, all right, so we have a versus, um, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm, I'm still going to go nay.
Principle. I understand, I'm, I'm, I understand, I'm not happy about it either, but we, we have to keep moving, unfortunately.
All right, let's do roll call, Mr. Underwood.
Aye.
Mr. Sealy.
Aye.
I'm going to say nay. Mr. Forehand.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
I was going to say nay, because I'm not going to vote for three cent tax increase, so. Yeah, I think I'm going to still say nay.
I'm saying nay.
Make a motion for two cents.
Second.
52 cents.
51 cents.
51.
Obviously, I knew that, because I thought I was just going to give Mr. Black a little bit of comfort. All right, so we have a motion 51.
I was on the losing side on that vote, right? Or was I on the winning?
There wasn't, no side.
There was no losing, well, wait.
No winning side, it was a tie.
Have we not considered votes on ties in the past?
He changed the new.
We have to move it to the next meeting, let's do that.
He changed the next year, we can't move it to the next meeting.
We can't move to the next meeting.
Right, I know. I, I think that's what it says.
Does it say move to the next meeting?
And in this case.
And we can always change the motion if it dies. And I'm making a motion 51 cents.
And I seconded it.
And Floyd seconded it.
There's no more motions, I can pull it up, but if there's no more motions, then it would default to the next meeting, but if someone makes another motion.
Right, that's what I thought it said. I made a motion.
You can, if that motion is the same later.
This, no, it's a different motion. So, so if, if you have deadlocked, which is what, what just happened on 52 cents, um, then let me just pull it up some up. The, here we go. 4-5-G, if the first vote of the board results in a tie, no action will have been taken on the item and another motion is in order. So that's what we just, if no other motion is passed on the item, that it will be automatically deferred to the next regular meeting of the board, which time must be put to a vote again. So that there is another motion made on 51 cents, that deadlock.
We can move forward.
We can move forward, yeah.
Are you allowed to change your vote if it's a tie?
You could, you, you could make a motion to reconsider the prior vote.
Except there's another motion on the floor.
You have to take the motion on the floor now.
Right, because you didn't do reconsider immediately. So there's another motion on the floor, on everything. And I'm saying, I, I'll call for the vote. All right, so we have a motion to advertise for 52 cents.
51 cents.
51 cents.
And that, that's on April 23rd, 7:30 P M.
Same, same day. 32. All right. Roll call, yep, again.
Was there a second to Mr. Sealy's motion?
Mr. Thomas seconded it. Mr. Underwood.
Aye.
Mr. Sealy.
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
Aye for Mr. Forehand. Aye for Mr. Thomas.
Nay.
And a nay. Motion carries. So the 23rd of April, 51 cents. And you'll take care of, we'll move the planning commission to another room?
No, they're meeting on the 24th.
They're going to meet on 24th.
Planning commission will be here that Thursday, 24th. Their ads have already run for some of their zoning actions. I mean, we will notice this as a special meeting under FOIA.
All right, thank you. Now, thank goodness, that brings us down to appointments, and I thought this was going to be a fairly easy meeting. Do we have, for reading church, do we have someone for the board to seek equalization?
Madam Chair, I do not, but I will bring it if it's possible at the, at their next, our next meeting.
All right, well.
Thank you.
We will move that to our next meeting. Do you want that the re, the next regular meeting?
I'd like to do it at the special meeting.
At the special meeting, okay. And, um, Mr. Forehand, do you have anyone for planning commission?
I do have Mr. Lee Tingler.
All right, we have Mr. Lee Tingler. Is that a motion?
Make a motion that would, that I nominate Mr. Lee Tingler.
And I'll second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, submited. Congratulations, Mr. Tingler. Wonderful. All right, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
Second.
A motion of second to accept the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, submuted. All right. Takes us to public comment. I lost my little piece of paper. All right, let me fill this. All right, public comment is a time where you may come up and speak on anything that is not a public hearing held tonight or one that, um, is. I need some help, I lost my little piece of paper. The public hearing is for, you cannot speak on the public hearing for tonight, or can they speak on any upcoming public hearings that have been advertised?
Let me get to that section, and I actually have my little piece of paper, so I'm happy to just read that.
Somebody took mine.
So the, um, nothing on public hearing that's scheduled within the next 60 days. That's not, there's no public comment on matters that are scheduled in public hearing within the next 60 days or for which we already have a public hearing. I'll just go ahead and read my little, um, short one. I'll just go ahead and read my little short one. "The purpose of the public comment period is to allow members of the public to speak to the board on any matter which in their opinion deserves the attention of the board. There shall be no comments on matters for which public hearing is scheduled to take place within the next 60 days or public hearing has previously been held and remains pending. Each individual speaker shall have three minutes to present comment. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and voting district, but not their home address. Citizens shall refrain from clapping or other public demonstrations of support or opposition. The public comment period shall serve, not serve as a form of debate with the board or a question and answer period with the board. Marks shall be addressed only to the board and shall remain, shall be made in a respectful, non-antagonistic manner. Comments shall focus on matters or issues before the board or the county." That's the short version.
Thank you. Poor Marla, when she sat here this whole time, she didn't know she could go. All right. At this time, is there anyone that would like to come forward? Public comment. Please state your name and your voting district, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Aiden Bassett. My district is Western Carolina, and I'm here to further comment on the need for funding for education. Caroline High School has a dire need for further funding, point blank. Staff are underpaid, teachers are unable to provide the proper equipment and resources for daily activities, and most importantly, the school infrastructure needs heavy improvement. At the very least, auditing or some form of guarantee must be given to ensure that any provided funding goes towards the right spots. Within the past 60 days, I've had two teachers, which represent a quarter out of the eight teachers across my classes, permanently, permanently leave. For the sake of their privacy, I will not name them nor their causes for their absence. The teachers taught two subjects that are graduation requirements, economics and world language, specifically Spanish, respectively. Amidst an ongoing teacher and substitute shortage, finding a permanent substitute was difficult, and in the economics class, the school has fortunately found a seemingly permanent substitute. Though this has stopped him from substituting other classes, with the introduction of separate teachers for Cav Block, a block dedicated for studying and remediation within the high school, certain students may not get the needed information if the teacher of that block is absent. Teachers have to split up their planning period, normally designated for planning their classes' work, into two portions to substitute for classes when regular substitutes are not available. The teacher and substitute storage must be addressed, as teaching is quite literally the entire purpose of the education system, and without teachers, this cannot be accomplished. In regards to infrastructure, much of it needs improving, especially as we move into the warmer months. Thankfully strides have been taken to improve infrastructures such as overhauling of the bathrooms. Unfortunately, much of the rest of the school that isn't newer suffers from water leaks, mold, cracks, and more. The school is also home to animals that aren't just the students, such as mice. I've personally seen, I've personally seen at least three mice within a single room before, which speaks greatly to how upkeep of the school is underfunded. Mold is also present in many ceiling tiles, as is water damage, cracks, and other damage. I can understand the want of new businesses to help with the local economy, yet this is a problem we've seen, we've been facing ever since I passed from middle school to high school. Throughout my entire scholarly career, I've seen classes with permanent subs and unfortunately, yet very rarely, no substitute at all. An uneducated populace leads to less and less people getting into good schools, leads to potential lower SOL scores, and thus possibility of less funding, and most importantly, less people to be in the higher jobs required for the desired economic expansion that you all would love to see in Caroline. Teachers, administrators, and school officials of the like have consistently been talking about getting the students 3E ready, employed, enlisted, or enrolled. How are the students supposed to become 3E ready if there are no plans or funding to provide for the clearly oft-neglected fourth E, education? Please implement some sort of strategy to invest in our and Caroline's first letter after E, F, for future. Thank you for, thank you for your time tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Well-written.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Sandra Gilliam, the assistant, the proud assistant principal at Lewis and Clark Elementary, and I'm not a resident here in Caroline County, but I love Caroline. I'm speaking tonight in order to bring your attention to the urgent and growing concerns regarding the overcrowded conditions in our schools here in Caroline County. Our current facility at Lewis and Clark are no longer sufficient to meet the needs of our students, staff, and community. As of today, we have 113 new kindergarteners registered for the 2526 school year. Yes, 113. Classrooms are overcrowded, and our exceptional ed teachers and students are being forced to share instructional spaces, making it incredibly difficult to provide the focused, individual support these students need. In some self-contained classrooms, we have over 13 students with parents and nurses also in the room, further straining space and resources. In addition, our small group reading intervention teachers are conducting lessons in hallways where students are already struggling in reading and math, and they face constant distractions from nearby bathrooms and long student lines. This is not a conducive learning environment for any child. Our cafeteria seating struggles to accommodate the current student population with least having 300-plus students in one, at one time in the lunchroom. During school, during our school-wide events such as assemblies or celebrations, it's difficult to provide ample seating for parents and families due to the safety limitations. These events cause parking concerns and long lines for parents waiting to enter the building. The fire marshal has warned that exceeding capacity could result in shutting down our events. The bathrooms are overcrowded with long lines, creating future disruptions through the day. Our custodial staff is doing their best, but there is a need for proper cleaning supplies and support to maintain safe and sanitary conditions, especially in high-traffic environment. As you know, schools are especially becoming breeding grounds for illness if it's not maintained properly. We are also seeing new homes being built in the county. We will, we will evidently lead to an increase in student enrollment. Our current infrastructure is already stretched to the limits and simply cannot accommodate growing, the continued growth. We urgently your support in advocating for and funding the construction of new schools, supplement buildings, and/or adding to the existing buildings in Caroline County. Our students deserve safe, healthy, and supportive environments where they thrive, and our educators need the space and resources to affect, to effectively do their jobs. Thank you for your time, attention, and commitment to the future of Caroline's children. We look forward to working together to ensure our schools are a place where we can learn flourish.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hello, my name is Violet Crawford. I come here as a fifth grader representing Lewis and Clark Elementary School. I have been in that school since I was in pre-K, and I have noticed over the years that, that Lewis and Clark has gotten very overcrowded. In fact, our school is 60 to 90 kids over the, over the school's capacity. I am here today to address the overcrowding in our school and some of the issues that the student body has recognized. First of all, I would like to address the bathrooms. We only have three stalls in our hallway for both 4th and 5th grade. 2nd and 3rd grade has the same problem also. Every time any student goes to the bathroom, there is always a very long line, which takes away from our learning time, which can eventually lower grades and make us do bad on our SOLs. 5th grade instruction can be fast-paced, so waiting 10 to 15 minutes to use the bathroom means that students may miss more important details for assignments and tests. Second, in the classroom, there are not enough resources and school supplies for each kid. Even though students bring supplies at the beginning, at the beginning of the year, replenish supplies during the year, and teachers use their own money to provide for what is lacking among the students, supplies are still in short supply. Supplies are not the only thing there's not enough of. Lack of space in the classroom is becoming more of a problem. With many of the classes at Lewis and Clark reaching up to 30 students per class, kids who need individual study time must head out into the hallway to complete their work. Teachers must raise their voices to teach their lessons, copy and storage spaces at a minimum, and at times, there are not enough seats. Finally, at lunch, there are a lot of kids in there, which makes it really loud. It also makes waiting in the lunch line for your food longer, which allows students only a short amount of time to be able to find a seat at the already crowded tables and sit down. These are not meant to be complaints, just insight into a student's perspective of daily life at Lewis and Clark as well as all Caroline County schools. I appreciate, I appreciate your time you took listening to me. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Well done.
Good evening, Chair Long, Vice Chair Forehand, and members of the board. I am Sarah Calverick, the proud superintendent who embraces a growth mindset and grateful to be before you during public comment. I would like to begin by thanking Mrs. Nancy Long, the chair for touring Bowling Green Elementary School alongside the school board chair Calvin Taylor yesterday to view our current facility and functional capacity challenges. We look forward to welcoming Mr. Sealy and Dr. Hubbard at the elementary school next week and invite anyone else to join us should your calendar permit this. Additionally, I would be remiss to not address some school-related comments made this evening. Rest assured, there is no fear-mongering spirit driving our Awareness, Education, and Advocacy Communication Plan. The facts gathered via the publicized demographic and facility studies stand on their own, specifically the number of approved housing permits. CCPS gleaned rooftop data directly from the county's planning department, which were lifted and replicated as submitted in all media outlets, including the published reports, school board and community presentations, and the 15 Facility Facts social media campaign. Each of these clearly notes that Carmel Church Station in Haymount, while permitted, would likely not be realized during this tenure period due to significant lack of infrastructure readiness. While reviewing the March 25th Board of Supervisor Work Session on School Facilities, CCPS noted a series of follow-up items. A short-term and long-term plan to accommodate the county's debt limitations, student residency data visualization map request, feasibility of Lotus Academy renovation, preschool funding streams, and the need for the school board office to relocate to the annex. Please note, the short and long-term plans have indeed been developed in collaboration with the architect-engineering firm, and while CCPS have offered numerous two-by-two dates to share in advance of the joint meeting, a date has yet to be solidified. As such, RRMM will outline these options at the joint meeting on April 14th. Excuse me, 16th. The county administrator was notified on Monday for 7:00 that the student residency data visualization map request was provided to the demographer. She is working to verify confidentiality of student identifying information and will provide maps for review at the joint meeting. In relation to Lotus Academy, CCPS provided hard copies of the Architect Report at your board workshop, noting that the facility is not a viable renovation candidate with related expenses being more than 80%, 86% of the cost of a new facility. CCPS has asked that the architect-engineering firm compile a similar report outlining annex data and recommendations regarding the renovation feasibility of this building. This will also be represented and presented by RRMM at the joint meeting on April 16th. In relation to our youngest learners, it is important to note the essential nature of preschool access to our most at-promised students. The financial narrative being- I'm almost done, thank you. Not only diminishes the impact of this critical service in a county identified as a daycare desert, but grossly underrepresents the robust funding streams from HeadStar, VPI, and Title I that pair with a nominal local match. In closing, noting Caroline County is having the lowest median income in the PD-16 planning region is absolutely correct, but I'd encourage you to evaluate the numerous whys, which are clearly spelled out in the recently completed VDH Community Health Assessment. 1 to 10,440 Caroline residents to primary care providers. Elevated concerns with maternal and infant health services. Highest obesity percentages and multiple elevated chronic conditions. Greatest percentages of households with the highest education attainment, reflective of no diploma or high school diploma. All is to say, there is much good work to do in Caroline County. It's time to roll up our sleeves together, and we invite you to take a look at Fire EMS, businesses, public safety, healthcare, parks and rec, and yes, quality schools, because we are all part of the Caroline puzzle. So we invite you to attend our school board meeting on Monday, where VDH will be joining us in sharing the comprehensive health assessment data, which will continue to inform our facility quest to bring to our students and our staff the facilities they need. Thank you, and I appreciate the additional time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luz Lopez. I'm here to, to represent the custodian for all of the school. The school custodian deserves a raise because their performance is essential at often the physical, demanding work that is vital for maintaining a safe clean, safe clean and functional learning environment. For students and staff, and they are frequently underpaid for their contribution. Many custodians are paid below a living wage, and their contributions are often overlooked or underestimated, leading to the staff shortage and burnout. I can, physical demand requires them to lift heavy objects, especially on summer when we clean the whole school. We lift it up more than 50 pounds than when they do the interview. They ask and if we can lift 50 pounds, but all of the desks, they're more heavy than that one for 4th and 5th grade. So please consider us to raise something, you know, for the, with the money we got every month that can barely even pay, you know, the mortgage or something. So we would like to get some raise on the, you know, maybe this year. We're gonna start on a 2050 to 26, because if you see our pay is the most low I see in the whole county. I used to work on one of the fast food. I used to make more than I make now. I don't mean I don't like my job. I do like it. And some of you know me because I used to work on a fast food, and I used to do the best I can. I like what I do. Please appreciate what we do, because we do a lot on our job for take care of the school and make everything is fine and clean for all of the classroom. But we need our raise too, because we demand, we don't, we don't live with the money. Especially with that payment we do every monthly, we had to figure out how to stretch to the end of the month. Please think about us too. We need you to help on that one. On your budget, count us too. We need your help for the cafeteria, for the custodian, because I don't know who we are the budget. But I think you got a good budget for all of the school. We deserve more than we make too. We do a lot. Especially on summer is the most heavy job we have. And all year long, because we had to be there on time and get out of there on time too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And just a reminder, and we've had some wonderful speakers, but clapping is not allowed. All right, it's just not fair to everybody that comes up here. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Hi, I'm Macy Grathwell. I live in the Madison District, and I'm a parent of a kindergartner at Lewis and Clark. First off, I'd like to say thank you for listening, and also families for listening to these comments. A lot of the overcrowding issues that we're facing are natural side effects of all the expansion and all the new homes, being inclusive and letting people into our county, being hospitable and offering programs that support all children. And we're telling these families and these children, you're welcome here. We have space for you, but we don't have a space for you. We have to still make room. That's what happens when you invite someone over to your table, you scoot over, and there's just not enough room anymore. We can't cross our fingers and hope that these families will solve the problem for us by sending their kids to the Carmel School or maybe the homeschool more this year. What would happen if we took the numbers of all these kids who are homeschooled in the county or are private schooled? Would we be able to teach them in a good environment? So these kids are facing major challenges in their current educational environment. They struggle to hear instructions due to large sizes of classes or inappropriate locations of learning environments. In the upper grades, the overcrowded hallways prevent them from reaching to their classrooms on time. My friend's sixth grader at Caroline Middle shared, "In my 2A class, you have to run to your next class or spend two minutes getting past the wave of people. This can lead to people getting mad and angry to the point where a fight could break out." And that day, he also shared with us that he only got two minutes or six minutes to eat because of how long the lines were that day. And that's their daily reality, and he didn't even think anything of it. He's, oh yeah, I just only had six minutes to eat today. Okay, well, it's a safety issue. But it might be their reality, but it's not acceptable. It's not conducive to a quality learning environment or setting them up for success. So, you know, we're asking, the parents of these children are asking for funds to be allocated for short-term and long-term solutions. And we know it's complex, and it requires a well-thought-out way forward, but we just don't want the complexity of the problem to paralyze us into inaction because our kids are going to suffer in the meantime while we try to figure out the best way forward. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hello. So my name is Sharda Williams, and I'm with the Madison District. I'm also the PTA president for Lewis and Clark Elementary. I had this whole speech written out, but everybody who has said, who have stepped up have actually said everything that I would personally say. So in my speech, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm just gonna say it from the heart, okay? So, at the end of this entire thing, our kids are overcrowded in the school. And with that being said, the options that we have given is an option, but at this point, we need to do better for them because they can't, they can't learn and get their, what they need with this overcrowding. Like you, like the kids have said, they have been brave to come up here and tell you what their situation is. And I personally feel like the funding to give them a better school and be better, that would be something to give them a future so that they can become and have more with each person would love to do, have an education. So if we can please come together, because we are one Caroline, and we want the best for our kids, why not give them better? If we can please fund the schools and give them that so they can become something better and become- and become whatever they want to be at the schooling and in their education. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for being willing to serve the PTA. Is there anyone else that would like to speak, Mr. Fortune?
Good evening, Chair Long, Vice Chair Forehand, members of the board. My name is Lydell Fortune, and I reside in the Mattupena District. I did not intend to speak this evening, but feel obligated to express my support for pre-K education in Caroline. Madam Chair, I stand before you as a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline. As a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline, I was able to graduate from the Caroline County Public Schools. As a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline, I was able to earn a BA from Virginia Tech. As a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline, I was able to earn an MBA from Strayer University. As a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline, I was able to earn a Juris Doctorate from the College of William &amp; Mary. As a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline, I was able to serve this county as a member of the Germana College Board. As a, as a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline, I was able to lead the Caroline County branch of the NAACP. And yes, as a benefactor of pre-K education here in Caroline, I've had the privilege to serve as the current Vice Chair of the Caroline County Public School Board. My mother is a high school graduate, and my ninety-three old father did not have the opportunity to further his education past the eighth grade. So I personally know the massive benefits that early education can have on the trajectory of one's life. Madam Chair, I submit to the board that my taxpaying parents of this county did not find it robbery to invest in pre-K education here in Caroline. And I'm sure that the taxpayers in this county who currently have three and four year olds in our pre-K program do not find it robbery to make this investment as well. As the Board of Supervisors and School Board continues to work together to address issues of overcrowding and growth, I respectfully request that we collectively champion pre-K education here in Caroline. Remember, a child's life may depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for all your service over the years to the county. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, public comment period is now closed. All right, that takes, public comment is now closed. Now we go to our public hearing. Who's handling this? This is an ordinance to reduce penalties and interest on 2025 real property taxes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the purpose of this public hearing, as you said, is to consider adoption of an ordinance providing temporary relief from penalties and interest on real property taxes that are due on June 5th, provided that such taxes are timely paid by June 23rd, 2025. So this is tied to the three month delay in completing the reassessment and the June 23rd date for zero penalties and interest is needed to allow the Commissioner's Office and the Treasurer's Office time to get the, the real estate bills out and meet the mailing notices that are specified in the Code of Virginia. It's necessary to make this change via ordinance because the, the county code specifies that real estate taxes must be paid by June 5th. It actually includes the date in the ordinance to avoid penalty and interest. So you can't just do it by a simple motion. You have to actually amend the ordinance, which will remain in effect, but of course no longer be effective once that date has passed. So staff would ask that you conduct the public hearing and adopt the, the ordinance as presented.
Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this topic? There's anyone that would like to speak, please come forward. Seeing none, this public hearing is closed, and I will open the floor up to board comments. Our motion, I'll take a motion.
Second.
I have a motion to, to adopt and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Your mic's off. All right, now we're on to unfinished business. We are at the continued discussion of the design for the proposed community center at Low Massey Park.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. At our February meeting, the board had directed staff to put together kind of an, an overview of what a building could look like, and we were to present a couple of different items to you. And really, when we started doing that, it came down to what do we really want in the building? And then we can really start designing around the building. So in your board packet, we did put together a smaller building that includes a commercial kitchen. It can, also consists of two offices, a storage area, and then a multipurpose room. And what that is, is basically it's one big room, but it would have a divider wall that we could divide into two smaller rooms. So if you had smaller events going on. This particular facility would be designed so that you could expand into a gym in the future, and it would accommodate seventy-five people sitting at tables and chairs. So that was kind of the starting point in, in talking with Mr. Underwood and in making sure that we had a facility that would accommodate the size of what we were thinking. So that puts us at about forty-four hundred square feet. With that, I would, you know, be willing to, to answer any questions that the board may have on the, on the facility.
Do we have any, any questions, any comments? I have one, so while I'm waiting. What is the purpose, Joey, of the, the long hallway on the one end with the little office tucked in the back? That just seems like an area that's not going to be very well seen or monitored when you've got new things going on. And I just wondered if that's an area marked for expansion. Were you saying that that would be a possible expansion in the future, or is that for this, the, the original build out?
No, that would be kind of the hallway. So the main entrance you come in, you make the left to a future gym or addition, for additional space in the future. So that would be the corridor that would have a doorway, possibly two doorways that might go right into a gym area, such as when you look at the gym here, there's two doors on both sides. Right now, we're showing one, but you could have two doorways that would go into a future gym. This is just a rendering that staff has put together. We're going to hire an architectural firm that'll put this together and make things flow. I know myself and Mr. Forehand had some discussions about maybe eliminating that hallway. And again, that was just kind of a connection point as that was put together, thinking we could put a gym on the side of that.
I could just see where that would be sort of a dead spot and a place where, yeah, people could do, yeah. You know what I'm talking about. Go ahead, Clay. But you're going to bring back other renderings.
There would be, yes.
Our final thing, Mr. Forehand.
No, I, I like, I like the, the multipurpose room, the kitchen, the storage space, the bathroom, battery.
Really nice.
See, but if we can make that hall interior, if we got to make it in, you know, eight or nine feet to get rid of that hallway, I don't know if that's, but I think we're on the right track.
Yeah.
So give them a, give them a good look at it and just hopefully they can utilize the space as best as possible.
Absolutely. Mr., I guess this is.
This is the county building, so.
Mr., who's that? Mr. Steely?
I was going to say, I agree with what you said. If you got rid of that, that ten by ten office, bring everything over ten feet and move, and make the bonus room thirty by forty or whatever that dimension is. When you add on to this with a gym, I would, I would add that on and, and add it into the next building rather than trying to add a hallway now that's going to be just dead space. It's going to be, it, it's going to serve no purpose, and it's a lot of square footage.
If you left it like that, I would just switch the office and the storage space. Move the office into the hallway and storage.
The original thought of that one particular office there was actually that we could have, the Sheriff's Office would have another community office to give the deputies a place, one where they could go take a break, they could do reports, get internet access, such as we've got Carmel Church Fire Station and Missparde Fire Station. So that's what that was kind of thought of.
It used to be there.
Right.
And they, and they used to have, long ago, they used to have a doctor's office and some retail in that area of commercial.
Yes.
So maybe that's part of what could be there.
We don't, you know, as us as, as civilians, we don't think about the, the issues of having to go to the bathroom when you're a deputy and you've got all your gear on. So, you know, you've got to secure that in a separate area where you can go to the bathroom and trying to do all that. So they'd give them a place in that area to do that.
Mr., Mr. Law?
Yes, Mr. Black.
Mr. Cully, I think I've got a, it's a fine, I guess my question is, where is the money? So if you do the math on this, four hundred and, or forty-four hundred square feet, and it's depending between three fifty and six hundred a square foot. So if you split the difference and say it's five hundred, five hundred dollars a, a square foot, you're looking at about two point two million dollars. Where, where is the, where is the, have you budgeted anything in the budget? So we were just talking about tax rate, and I was just kind of curious, have you put this in a budget anywhere?
No, this would end up going in the capital budget, which I haven't done, but I'd only planned anything in the capital budget to be able to fund from the fund balance. We had originally, the plan we brought forward for all of this was to try to budget cigarette tax revenue to float some sort of loan to pay for the building. And, and the, the important part of this is always keep in the back of your mind, we only had five years, which we've used a year and a half of before to slam by deed, could revert back if the Don Association, Progressive Association, well, the Community Association wants it back. So that was how we had planned to fund it. Figure out what we wanted to build, use the revenue from the cigarette tax as a way to pay the loan back.
The cigarette tax, so I thought in the cigarette tax.
Fifty percent of it's going to parks.
Correct. And how much did we leverage against, like when we did the, how much did we leverage when we did the, the pickleball courts, tennis courts? How much should we spend there? What is the?
Yeah.
Well, part was out of fund, but some of it was on the cigarette tax too. How much of the, I thought we had some of the cigarette tax money already like going towards.
Yeah, but we, you know.
No, we didn't, but.
It's still collecting it.
We took out the fund balance, right?
So we still have the four hundred thousand coming in from the cigarette tax per year that's, that nothing is.
Unencumbered.
It was eight hundred, but we said, we said four hundred thousand.
It's not eight hundred. I think we lowered the number down based on.
Seven.
Six, six hundred thousand, but.
So three hundred thousand, because we said fifty percent.
Yeah, three hundred.
So three hundred thousand is coming in, so that's unencumbered money. So we have three hundred, so we got six hundred thousand from the cigarette tax, three hundred thousand that's unencumbered right now that we can use towards this.
Correct.
What is the mortgage on? I mean, I'm just kind of, do you know what the?
I can get that for you, but yeah, no. Yeah, but you know, what it, what it five percent on it is for squeals and giggles.
I mean, these are things like you, you said this wasn't part of your budget, right?
Capital's not, what I've been focusing on is all of those things.
Right.
Give me that, and then what's twenty? Try not to do anything but your piping work for thirty. Hundred ninety-three thousand on a thirty year note, but we would do it a twenty year note. But you would probably be able to cover that. That's at five percent, we probably hit a better rate.
All right.
Those are those kinds of things I would, if you decide you want to do something, we'll get Courtney to figure it out.
Okay.
Two thirty-seven at twenty.
Okay.
That's at five percent. I, I bet we could beat that.
So Mr. Cully, do we need to wait for a final plan to come in? You said, Joey said that you're working on.
Yeah. Go back.
So what we're looking for, originally we had asked for the board to, to allot the, the funding to be able to actually start the design services. So, you know, the funding that Mr. Black was just talking about was for the building. So we're looking about a third, a three million dollar budget to do everything. We've got to do the, all the exterior work, all the design work, all the ENS, we've got to get permitted through DEQ, permit, turning lane through VDOT. So we've got a lot of unknowns that we've got to work through. So that's what we want to do now. We want to go ahead and, and hire a consulting firm to come in and architectural services to design the building, and we'll go ahead and start the permitting process and get all the upfront so we can bring back to you with a real number of, here is a rendering of what we think this building will look like, and to make sure along that way that you have input into that. And then we'll bring back a final number and ask you to authorize us to go out to bid to construct the facility.
Understood, but isn't this, there was a building there before? Is it there already an entrance? Do we have to go back?
There's, it's, it doesn't meet the new standard for what you'll need for site distance, so we might need a turning lane.
Okay. All right. Just, I'm just wondering why we couldn't, couldn't use the same driveway and just improve it? All right, so do I have a motion to move forward with?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we continue to move forward with the building of the Low Massey Community Center.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved. Thank you, Mr. Shit People. Appreciate it. Just kidding, oh boy, now we're all, we're back up to another one of yours, Joey.
I thought we decided this.
You just asked, we said we'd bring back a rendering, so this is, this is a rendering that we did. We have not gotten it back from the tank company. Just to give you an idea, we almost pulled it from the agenda, but since it was here, we had to get some feedback about maybe not making the Caroline so bold, so making that a little bit less bold. But just giving you an idea, making sure we get a head nod, because the tank, we're trying to get this scheduled before you have another meeting. So I just want to make sure you guys are good. We will send out an email, making sure everybody's good with the actual rendering once we get that.
Questions, the MCD, going to go on the other side of the tank?
So this one's actually the Petro tank.
Oh, okay.
Carmel Church tank.
All right.
I think that's what we decided last time. ID, yeah, industrial development or whatever they had. Everybody, right, Caroline County.
And that would go with the MCD tank.
Right. But the other side said, that's on every tank.
Yeah, this is on every.
And then each other one gets an individual where they are.
Okay. So if that, so I thought Carmel Church tank, though, you wanted this on both sides.
Yeah, that's what we said, both sides, so you could see north and south.
We can do that, since you see them both from, from ninety-five.
Right.
We can do that.
Okay, and then Carmel, and then the MCD tank, we would do that on one side, and we would do, as you're coming into the industrial park off of the main drive, we would put the logo somewhere to that.
Right.
Right. And then we will bring back some ideas when we get ready to do the Ladysmith tank. If you wanted to add something, we'll see if you all have any other ideas for the other side of that tank.
Got anything going on down toward Meadow Park so we can get the secretariat up in the air?
We've got a ground storage tank we could put the secretariat on. That'd be pretty cool.
Ashland, he's in Ashland, yeah.
That's right.
That's a, that's a glass tank, so it's a little bit different. We don't have to paint that one, but it has a glass line tank.
Yeah.
Tank's not big enough.
All right, we'll talk about that later. Thank you so much.
I mean, what is the review for the VDOT plan? I mean, there's like three things on it.
We have to have a public hearing for it.
So let's, I make a motion, we schedule a public here.
Second.
Is that all we need on that, Mr. Cully? We have a motion.
Do you want a date? Or do we, the staff can figure out the date, can't they? May thirteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, May thirteenth. I'll add it to my motion.
I thought there was a thing in the book here.
I, I missed that, but I knew, I mean, there's so little there. It's May thirteenth, public hearing is my motion.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. So moved.
I didn't see the planning commission schedule.
Do you have that other closed session exception?
Andy.
Before we go into closed session, do we want to do the informational calendar when we come back? Okay. How about closing board comments now? All right, Mr. Underwood, why don't you go ahead and start?
As long as you were going to do the status of capital projects first.
Oh, okay, let's do the staff of capital projects first and then go to the plan, to the comments.
We've included the status of capital projects expenditures in, in your packet. We also have included the summary of plan commission recommendations that we moved off of consent to show you where things are on that. So unless you have some questions for, for Leon on those, we'll try to go into all those. You mentioned more things than we know of on the calendar already tonight, but our next event's Saturday, early morning for the Fire and Rescue Regional Fire Spring School at Caroline Middle School, and I think as long you're speaking at seven or whatever, it's fairly early.
Eight.
Eight. Next Wednesday, we need to recess out of this meeting to next Wednesday at six o'clock for the work session with the school board. And then in this room, the, the recruit academy number two of fire rescue recruits is graduating at six o'clock. That was very good program a couple of years ago when we had that.
Yeah.
And so if you can attend, obviously Easter is the twentieth, and we agreed tonight to hold a public hearing. And just for clarity, we're going to advertise the public hearing rates for everything else, which I didn't propose to change, so personal property rate and PPTR rate, percentage rate and all those things that's a normal tax hearing.
But you're going to let us know beforehand what the personal property values are.
Yes, yeah, I'll send you those.
Okay, because that could affect our real estate choice.
And the business appreciation dinner is the eighth?
Yes, we have that on the eighth, and then as you heard earlier, Sparta Fire Station grand opening on the tenth at eleven. And then next board meeting after that, unless we set another special meeting, leaving out of one of these other meetings, is the regular meeting is the thirteenth of May. And of course, then there's a second meeting right after Memorial Day on the twenty-seventh of May. So those are the things that we know of on the calendar. You mentioned, we do have that big cleanup day, the twenty, April twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth. So those are the things that I know of.
When is graduation?
That's a school.
Tuesday night? Thank you.
Now can I go?
All right. Mr. Black, do you have any closing board comments?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate something from my opening board statements that I will stand by, and I said perhaps truths, if, if we have on the books, if we have on the books in the county for neighborhoods that are not going to happen, and we know they're not going to happen anytime soon, it's, it's not a realistic number, it just isn't. So if you, you can say Carmel Church Station, or you can say that Haymont, yes, there's a reality that they are permitted, but in the end, I mean, I think everyone on this on the planet knows that those, those most likely will not happen anytime soon. So to say that we're going to get eleven thousand new, it's just not reality. So thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, I will reiterate again that I said I'm in favor of building a new school. And I also think that we need to have some baseline discussions about where we are with the school system, because Mr. Black, when we were originally had that meeting, I said we need a five-year plan, and, and he said we need longer, but we really agree now, because we need something quick that'll make us, you know, whole in the next couple of years, I think, if we got the right solution, so I'm trying to support that.
Yeah, and Mr. Thomas, I would agree with that, and I would like us to, to meet as a, a board sometime, maybe we break up into groups to talk about that, but we should definitely discuss that in the near future. Mr. Forehand?
I would like for us to advertise for the additions for an architect, design, whatever it may be, soon. We know that those are going to be necessary regardless of what the elementary solution is, so I think it's something that we can get started on. So one of the few things we can all agree on, so if we can have some consensus to move that ball forward, I think that would be a positive step.
I think the schools had some rough ideas as to what the cost was on those before they submitted the idea to us, Doctor?
It's in the, it's in the, it's in the.
Yeah, the plan she set, the diagram she set for the two additions, how detailed did you all get that? Quickly. Not, not run quickly because you hurt your knee. I just want to know if you can send us whatever information you all got.
We have the original plans that are available on the website in their full totality, and then, as mentioned in my public comment, we've worked with RRMM over the last week and a half to develop a option one and option two that both outline short term and long term, short term being years zero to three, long term being four and beyond. And so we really tried to prioritize, that seemed to be a key word in your award workshop, is what are the school board's priorities? And so we did indeed have a closed workshop ourselves to talk about facility, property acquisition, all of those topics associated with it, so that we could go to RRMM and talk with them. So we have that, that's why we'd love to do a two-on-two with you, so you have advanced knowledge of that, and we can be productive on the April sixteenth meeting together. We want you to have that in advance.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it, take care of that knee. All right. Forehand, you've got that? I'm okay.
I'm done, I'm no comment.
Sorry, Underwood.
I just have a couple, Madam Chair, I really appreciate Mr. Fortune's comments about pre-K. I am in no way saying that we should get rid of pre-K and Head Start. What I'm saying is it should have its own entity, its own building. Pre-K is important, and I absolutely agree, there are children who would not flourish without pre-K. So not saying that we shouldn't have pre-K, I'm saying I want the citizens to know that your tax dollars for our buildings pay for K-12. There's two billion dollars that's given to schools to run Head Start and pre-K. That money should be used for pre-K building or pre-K, but it should not be braded in with K-12 money. We should know what the budget is for pre-K, we should have a budget for K-12 to understand where the tax dollars are being spent. What concerns me even greater is that students standing up here talking about mold and mice and the ceilings leaking at the high school, and we spent twenty million dollars just a few years ago on, on the building. Again, thirty-three million dollars in deferred maintenance, I think there's a problem, we, we can't continue to do this. So we have to look at it to make sure that we're giving our students what they need. And finally, I say, if teachers don't have the resources, if students don't have the resources to be successful, we just spent millions and millions of dollars from COVID. We threw away hundreds and hundreds of desks piled up behind the middle school. We should have resources, if nothing else. That's my comment, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. I have, can I have a motion, we have a motion to go into closed session, do we have a second?
I got to make a motion first.
No.
I move that this board convening closed session pursuant to the following, the consultation with legal counsel, negation exceptions of two point two dash three seven one A seven A eight of the Code of Virginia, and the consultation of legal counsel exemption section two point two three seven one one A eight of the Code of Virginia, the contract exemption of section two point two dash three seven one one A twenty-nine of the Code of Virginia for discussion of terms of performance and incentive agreement, and for the personal exemption of section two point two dash three seven one one A one. I'd like to get a second.
Second.
Please.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so moved, we are in closed session. Thank you, everyone.
That the Caroline County border supervisor certified to the best their or each board members knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meetings requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies and two, only such public business matters as identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard discussed or considered by the board.
Second.
A vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I do, yes.
You're Michael.
I so certify.
Mr. Thomas.
So certify.
Mr. Forehand?
I so certify.
And I so certify Mr. Seale.
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood.
I so certify.
Thank you gentlemen, do I have a motion to recess?
Motion to recess until April sixteenth at?
Six o'clock.
Is that here or in EOC?
I think it was in the EOC.
In the EOC.
I think, but in this building if nothing else.
Okay, in this building.
But I'm pretty sure it's EOC.
Depending on what's going on.
I mean, we don't sound emo- is it a motion? Yeah, it's a motion.
Motion to reconvene, you got a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, so move, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, well, no, 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 no.
No, 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 to recess.
Recess.
Thank you.
Alright, we are done, I am done.